What I want to want is. I love before they started.
Christopher, that's where we can change this in this border. Want this to be saved updated? Or like say this is separate.
Ah, separated out, separated out.
Okay, I'll call this uh. November third. Work session, sign up mission to order. And the first mine first. Agenda item is thank you all, because I couldn't play it out for six, two and a half weeks. Chest cold, I didn't want to give it to you guys, just thank you, you got to do it all the work, so. Didn't want to stop any work effort.
By the way, how was your, did you go to the dance with your granddaughter?
No, that's coming up in all, that's that's December twenty.
That's.
Yes. But I did want to get a couple of things out on the table if I could first. Uh Kurt, now I'll get back to you if that's okay. Cover anything from the from the city side, but I wanted to find out um from Bill Suter where we are on the um. On the park, the river.
Yeah waterfront park, right. Well, the latest, well, tonight we have another meeting, we have a work session tonight and we're going to review a. Put together a questionnaire for the city people, for the population. So we're gonna see the final draft tonight. And Scott Marshall and his crew will. Get it out online and put it in the newspaper and public size and and there'll be a QR code. Asking questions about how you feel about the waterfront park, where do you want to go with it, what do you want to do with the marina? Et cetera, it's about ten or twelve questions. That's the latest. Design wise, they've come up, they have the three choices. And they're going to be presenting those, we think, after the first city year. Designers being designers can never beat a schedule. But hey, I never said that. Designed to infinity, that's what you got to train to do. That's what we're saying right now, and then we're we're meeting an executive session on the lease. Which I can't speak about, but other than that, we do need to talk and discuss the the whole lease with the. Old company.
Same harbor, is it same harbor?
Yeah, same harbor, yeah. Safe, yeah, safe harbor, right. So that's that's where we stand.
Okay, and I think you said something about the options. Last time, have they changed the law?
No, they they originally, and I was gone when they did this, they had eight options to start with. And they presented that to the commission and to the city council and to the whole public, and they whittled down to three. And they're, and that's what they're working on right now. Want us to go back with the relieving platform. Want us to do the um sea wall. Third one is some type of floating mechanism, and I never did get a. Complete answer on some floating type of extension to the farm. Where they can come up, I'm not sure what that is. That's what we stand.
But the park will stay the same size?
Basically, yeah, yeah, they're still, where that relieving platform is. I think it's thirty-six inches or thirty-six. Thirty-six feet rather, out into the water, that'll, it's still being planted on saying the same invention. Then there there as a as a side option, I don't know, as a side plan. They're going ahead with the reinstallation of the um. Day dock. And they're going to get the gangway instead of terminating at the uh. Edge of the edge of the park and bring the gangway up over the park and down. In towards the park where I'm out that got a. The compass rose in the garden brick. Uh end up there with the gangway and get it up over the relieving platform, so they can open that up again, because that's quite useful. For the city. So they can take on like twelve. Someone watching both of them there at a time, I'd say on it, so.
I thought that impact the promenade like from people walking from like, you know.
I'm not sure, I don't, I haven't seen how they're going to terminate it, but the idea is to get the the um. The gangway up and over the problem line through the fantasy, if you will.
Right, right.
Into the into the park. So they have access to the uh day dock. The interest. And all they're doing is waiting on permits permitting for that um and they can, there's money in the budget to handle that. Design and construction, not that big a. Couple hundred thousand dollars. Compared to the, for the uh relieving platform, it's a jump change.
Any other questions for Bill?
Yeah.
Hey, Paul, I can sit over there.
All right. If if I may, you mentioned a discussion of leasing executive session. I would say that that's what got the city in trouble first time, not revealing. Uh the details of a lease in public as it was being negotiated, and that's probably a point I should go and mention at the meeting this afternoon. But I think, I don't think you're required by law to negotiate that in seconds. I think it's a choice.
I I I don't know the legal realm, that's outside my belly, the the whole deal with the lease.
But that's, so that's what's going on though, never.
Correct, yeah, we don't discuss that in open um. Form, if you will, it's always in the close.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next uh, next item I wanted to cover was the uh. The new task force that's uh being born. And uh, I think as it sits right now. Bill's position, or at least the identifiable position. Or Bill uh will be an ad hoc position on the task force. And um Bill's. Value to uh to that task force suspect that he is uh. Uh a land attorney, and I think can be extremely helpful uh as we move forward. And start discussing some of the more detailed kind of things uh with that group. My my hope is that um. Uh we'll be able to, after. Forming this official task force sometime within a couple of months, we should be able to write. Uh that section that we're missing code right now. About demolition. I just don't feel we're there yet.
Demolition is just about the the houses in the um historic historic district, yes, comments for that.
Correct. The task force, I think, I hope will be addressing not just the historic homes. Per se. That are uh on the register, our our uh city registry, but also the homes that are in need of repair. And how to give money to people so that we don't continue to lose homes, but. More importantly, lose the living facilities of the people that are currently in there. Uh because as you know, there are uh some properties that have holes in roofs, as an example, that people are still living in, so. It it'd be great for the city to try and ease button up where where we are, what we have. The the uh the other position uh which would be the permanent position on that uh board uh for now. Uh will be a position that will be elected by this planning commission. And uh I would like to get those elections for uh Bills and my past position elected. Probably in the next um public meeting, I would think. So that that's that's done and we have that behind us. Uh so uh you can think about if you want to nominate, uh who you want to nominate. Uh for those. But I would suggest that Bill's position is. More of a non-negotiable of the way I. Like put it in front of the city council. Do you have anything uh that you want to add to that? And they did go out with a publication. Uh requesting um people that want to apply to be on that board from the community. And there's, I think, four positions, is it? Five, five positions, there's five positions from the community that are open and um they would uh. Respond in writing, uh be interviewed and then um. Approved uh to go on the board. Pending the uh interview process. And city council is interviewing, or are you interviewing?
City council.
City council. That's a better safe way to go. I don't think you wanted to do that. So. So do you do you have any idea, uh did they have, they mentioned anything about when that might occur?
I think the deadline's now summer thirty first. Next year. Okay, the lunar.
Very slow. And we started this process two months ago. But. I think it's clarified at least to this point. Uh and and uh staff has done a great job in in producing the written documentation. Get that in front of city council and have it. Uh in a format that they would um positively respond to it. They would move that forward, so appreciate all that you guys have done.
Those tasks were.
Sure, permanent, also the. Quadrant.
No, no, once again, we discussed with that the next one, housework. Yeah, whether they get to.
Okay, so that's a whole different issue.
There's a whole different issue, but if you read two, three, four, you'll notice that that is where we have in short term. Probably favoring that. Based on where we are with city council, the intent I had was to have a joint session with city council, and I believe they're. Prove or or want to do that, so that we can. Express our thoughts and ideas with uh come up with a. I think what happened was when we made our position known. Well, I've been interacting with city council. Uh as a council and on an individual basis with each council member. Um to talk about what our position was and why we were there. And uh in large part, there was uh agreement. But um there were some sticking points that they had. And through discussion, I think there's some. Good ways around getting to where we think it ought to be, but still being a little bit flexible. And we talked about it to some degree. Uh when we were making our decisions, but um I think. I think when we have our joint session, that will come. Now, what I would like to do, if possible, is uh when they come up with uh some. Information, if they do come up with any information, we might get together and discuss that information before we go into a joint session. Anything else? Okay, I believe. Kurt, we have consultants online now.
We have our city architect. Uh who is a consultant online, Jeremy and then Maria. So yes.
Okay, great. Um and I believe. Uh the agenda that he put out wants us to go ahead and address. Chapter four on today.
Yes. Uh that's a fair time.
Is there? Is there anything? Going into chapter four with these, oh, I'm sorry. The. Publication that we got from staff. In our packets today. That publication. I would like to not make any. Further printings of two, three or four. Until we have finished it, unless for some reason the board feels we need to reprint something. Because we've already got. A few of those and.
And just so you know, Christopher reformatted. After he did it, so um Nick is gonna update his the four nine version, so. So maybe we can give you a format of copy.
Haven't changed anything to the content, I just cleaned up the formatting.
Yeah.
To to any additions.
Yeah, I understand that. My problem is every time I I get one, when I sit down to do my reviews, I do my reviews on it.
Sure.
So I don't.
So the, so the the blue line that we got. In this meeting, that's the one that you said you reformatted? Or have you done some since then, Chris?
He's reformatted since.
Oh, you don't see it, you will see it, you will see it.
Oh, it's it's redlined, it's it's redlined, it's, I mean, what, we'll see it when?
Well, in the future.
In the future, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so when when work's done, it might.
It's just the formatting, it's nothing.
As long as everything's still.
Is that crazy that we can't find the? Number on the.
So I guess any changes we'll make on this here and then uh. When we bring back another section to you, we'll just have the section itself.
Yes.
This is the. The Bible, the cube Bible, the source code.
Okay, so uh what I'd like to do is what we've said that we're going to continue to do, and that is. Start out asking if anybody has any overarching issues with chapter four. That we should address. That um before we get into the detail of it, so.
Would you like uh maybe Jeremy to kind of just let, because you know, we obviously did some of their, Jeremy and this meeting. Really did a lot of work on the vernacular architecture section that's new.
Right.
Guidelines, so I don't know if you want to just, you know, let them have a few minutes to try to explain that.
Well, I I I will, but first I want one. Information since they've been reading it and marking it up, if there's anything that they see. Is an overarching issue. Uh with with this is formatted or written. Obvial or verbalized, whatever that is, and then, and then, yeah, let's go to our consultant. I I think this is written pretty well. I I obviously have seen this, but I don't, I think it's written well and and the. Attitude uh structure in here, I think, is is fairly good as well. So um. I'll leave it at that for now. And ask. Let's turn to consulting.
This is Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Ask Jeremy if you would like to say anything before we get into it.
Sure, sure, good afternoon. Um so, yeah, Kurt and Christopher, Nicholas, Maria and I kind of con. Confirmed on this and talked about, you know, one of the things that we consistently um are trying trying to do is to push. Applicants in a low country vernacular, so certainly creating that low country vernacular language. That really starts uh as design guidelines under four point three point one and then carries forward. With specific guidelines under four point three point two was kind of critically important. Uh we looked at a number of. Of other jurisdictions uh within the low country to to learn from uh from them. Um and and this kind of this structure was really gleaned from. The title Mount Pleasant, who is also uh struggling, uh and they've been adapting their their ordinance over the past uh few years. So by no means do I think that it that theirs is perfect or anything, but it was a starting point at which we then began to. To launch in and try to make it more specific to Beaufort. Uh so I definitely would love your your insight on kind of reading through that and any changes you might have. And then from that, we looked at um the specific building types, and we haven't gotten to all of them yet, but certainly the ones that have been. Edited within here. I'm scrolling down myself to try to remind myself of of the ones. Um we really wanted to add language into, and we're working currently on single family. Uh detached homes, I know there's been some language added uh uh to this as well, but we want to refine that. Um same thing with two to three unit row, uh two, three unit home, the row home slash town home. But really, we focused a lot on the four point five point seven apartment house, really trying to 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 put. Um more direction in there to help us, to help the applicants, to help you as a as a board. Scrolling from that, it gets into live, work, mixed use, which we still have some some work to focus on there, same thing with liner buildings. And then uh same thing with large footprint buildings. Didn't really get into structure parking yet, uh but gas, fuel station and car washes, we definitely wanted to spend some time in here. Uh uh given that we've had a number of those come through and the same thing with drive-through facilities. Uh as a kind of a separate uh item that we were adding, civic buildings is not significantly uh edited. But we did add within civic, uh right behind civic, I should say, church and institutional buildings. We had one. Project come recently that was a church, um and I think they did a very good job with it. But we felt like it needed some specific things that. That help with church, for example, does a church need forty percent finestration percentage, or could they get by with something a little less? So that was kind of the basis of this, and it was taking from a lot of different um jurisdictions and and compiling it into. This to try to create a cohesive idea. I understand that this is a first read, so I certainly expect we're going to refine it as we go through. But that's all I've got to add.
Thank you, Jeremy. Well, one of the things that I think. Would be really helpful to. People that are coming to do designs. Is to have. A little more photographic evidence of what we're talking about. And to the, and I think. We don't have to have. A whole ton of photographs in each of the areas to to try to illustrate. Uh at least an example of something we feel fits that. Uh category. But I think uh. Something that people could look at and and use to. Help better understand where our heads are at. Is that something that you would be doing, Jeremy?
Yeah, we we'd love to help with that. Certainly, I'd love input from from you all on it as well. Um but yes, that that is our kind of a next step as well.
That'd be great. I appreciate that. Any other comments for Jeremy before we start?
I I just like to um put one thing out there, Jeremy, you need to screen share as well, or you even need to go to any specific section in the. Section board on, just let me know.
All right, I'll let you know.
And Jeremy, usually what uh what we do is we go page by page, line by line.
Okay.
Based on, you know, comments that people have as we go through it. And as you said, this is a a first read, so we'll go ahead and we'll start with the. Uh page one and start with the. Four one one purpose. And I noticed there's a blue line behind purposes there. And a chat for something else to go there?
Um no, I don't know why that's there. I mean it's.
Okay.
Well. What time do you have to leave?
Yeah, I was gonna say, how much time do we have?
Uh I can, I can be here till two thirty.
Okay.
Yes, maybe, maybe it's cellular lines, but a lot, you should see where. Such specific questions. Specific things we have for him on. Yeah, well, uh we don't have any photographs today that. Or line or lines or something other.
We haven't, you know, gotten to that point, but uh I think I can either do the drawing, sketches, they may, or they have done one, yeah, for it.
I think as an overview kind of statement, uh I I think for the most part, you have done what. I would. Like to have have done here, and that is to um. Kind of define the classical uh vernacular uh. Uh that started out with the Vincenzo Brusier, but there's sent six principles of design. Uh and that is order, arrangement of. Symmetry. Proportionalism. Uh propriety and economy, and and I think uh in my mind, you have. Kind of described all those as you've gone through here. And I think it's it's fairly consistent from that standpoint.
Okay.
But most of my. Comments are going to be uh. Based on um verbal comments of of things that are in here. And not necessarily changing whole sections, so. Is that what you were after, you have any sections that you have?
I guess, so here's just sort of a big concept, in my, I think. As far as vernacular. We're really, the the his, what's done in the historic districts are. Completely different than what's done elsewhere. And I think we need to pre-keep that, recognize that, and not as we. Uh impose architectural guidelines on everything in the city of Beaufort. That we we start nitpicking to the level of what's done in the historic district. And just so, as I look through some of this, you know, I start wondering whether we're already going down that line. You know. My thought was that we were going to say, listen, we, there's a whole country vernacular, these are some. You know, some nice, these are some images of what we expect. But we're not going to get into whether the siding is wood or. Party plank, you know, in an in an outside of the historic district, or we're not going to get into. Uh designing every column of the front, just just take my way of one example. When the. Townhome buildings on Bay Street that Alan Patterson did, very nice, you know, when he went through that, that was in the historic, obviously. And he had put, I think, I got this crap, he had put some. Broad-eyed railings or something on there, or maybe it was in reverse, and and they and they made him change it. Well, I understand, it was in the historic district, they had to be very specific about all that, but I wouldn't think that would be appropriate. Outside of the historic district, I mean, if we say that we want torches, we all let somebody design a porch. You know, as long as it fits within that sort of vernacular, the low country porch, as opposed to, you know, something, you know, totally different. Um and that's, just looking through some of this, I'm just wondering if. And and I without pointing it out specifically at this point, just wondering if we're going down that road too much, being too specific. And I just throw that out for, should really of the, uh well, Jeremy, but also the the planning commission here is uh. And then the last point on that is, when we come up with these guidelines. I think that we, the planning commission, have to. Control ourselves, so if we come up with some guidelines in this, the guidelines are in the code. And we don't start going way outside and nickpicking these people to death where they can't ever get anything past us, because. We just don't stop with our own personal predilections about what we want. You know, so I think the bottom line is we're we're trying to have a couple of vernacular, give people good guidance. If outside of that, we're going to hold them to that, but we're not going to be. Every one of us an architect on everything, you know what I'm saying? Does that make sense, or am I off base?
I think it makes sense, but I think this documentation that we have. Comes close to doing what you're saying.
Okay, okay.
Um I think that there are some things in here. Uh the design issues that I find that are uh not consistent with good construction, and I think.
Okay.
Fortify those. Your example, though, of those apartments. Uh that Patterson did, reasoning he had to take those things off was because. Uh his contract documents showed.
Right.
Different materials on there, and they were approved as different materials.
So that was wrong, he didn't follow his own.
And he did not follow his own uh documents and had to take those off.
But had, but I guess I only use it from this standpoint, had he been doing it out in the T three S district somewhere. And he came in originally and said, I want to put broad island railing. and he came in originally and said, I want to put broad island railings, and I'm not sure that we should be specifying that it has to be, you know, a particular kind of railing, you know, maybe he had
I don't think this does that. This gives you options, and I think this board can look at these as we go through them and decide whether or not, um, uh, we need to have more flexibility than what we put in there or not.
Yeah, and that's how we developed them, uh, with Jeremy, because we're very sensitive, I'm very sensitive, same thing, you're talking about. Where we do, but we wanted to create guidelines that, a whole, coming up with a, a design that allows creativity and dining room, but it wasn't prescriptive and too prescriptive, right? We go into this historic preservation where, or where every single
But that should hold true in the historic district.
That, that's still strong, that's right. You know, it gives you like six options for materials, you have to go somewhere to look.
Right, district, like area, to the same, I don't, the same development.
I guess like regarding the materials, there's a little bit of, uh, we need there's some materials on this four point three point two, on the new part, and then we have the four point six material, which is a longer length, so.
I guess, yeah, we might have to.
Yeah, I, I think there's some, definitely, and that's where I was thinking that you, you and I may have some disagreements with some things, uh, that we want to put in there, because there's there's new materials that are, that actually they tried to do now for a few years, that, that we don't, uh, in, include in here right now. And, uh, but we do, we do give it to the administrators discretion. So that when somebody brings a new material to the table, uh, it can be reviewed by administration. And either seven or, or, or not at that time, and so I think that part of it's good.
It, it, and it isn't to say that there are some things we would just prohibit, like, I remember a number of years ago, builders were using EFS on everything, which is what I'm raising, you can put that Sarafone stuff at the end, put a little bit of spackle on. And it looked, it looked nice, but you could jam your fist through the handle, that's and I think, and then it had other mold, mold issues and stuff, and, you know, and so then I think we started saying where I was, I started saying, no, this stuff isn't working at all, yeah.
So, but, you know, to your point, I, I, I think that it has been addressed to yeah, at least some degree in here, so. So if we want to go ahead and, and start going through it, uh, the first comment I have is on four, one, one purpose, uh, item B. Uh, it says support high quality streets and public spaces. And I think, um, I don't like, uh, doing adjectives like high or grade or, you know, all that. I think just say support quality streetscapes and public spaces. So I think that's what we're talking about. It's not streets, it's streetscapes.
It's existing language, so, yeah, I just didn't touch it. We can make that change.
I'm not trying to criticize. We're reviewing the whole code, so. Um, and then the next one on C, encourage architecture that blends harmoniously with the natural surroundings. And then it says add neighborhood development. Do we need the add neighborhood development, or do we leave it at natural surroundings?
Natural means making the natural environment, and then the second is the built environment, I think that's what neighboring development means.
Rewrite it to the potential environment and
It is a natural built environment.
Probably be better. And number D, I don't think we can safeguard property values.
I agree. I think that if we do, like we just said in C, and we do B, we're going to end up safeguarding them. But not independently set on.
Right, I think there's, I think we need to have a different language there, instead of safeguard, because we can't do that. That's something we can come back to, or do you want guys want to?
Suggest that we, uh, try to get the stuff, well, Jeremy, let's hear it.
Yeah.
Instead of focusing on we can come back to those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, I've talked with maybe a Jeremy question, um, about built, this is going to four, four, I think built private fundages. If we eliminated the four court, uh, build private, private type. Wondering, I mean, I know it hasn't been devised and maybe a, a lot of this, I just think of, let's say courtyard apartments that you find in other historic, let's say, cities large and small, Savannah, Charleston, Orlando, I mean, there are gorgeous these, I call them courtyard apartments, they're sort of made in a U, I mean, it looks, the shape is like this. And I mean, they are, they're not traditional to Buford, but they're traditional, let's say, to the southeast. And they're just really nice examples of multifamily that can fit in and variety of places and I mean, that's what the four court, um, private site was trying to get to. I don't know, I mean, why would we eliminate that, or is that not really what that's trying to center?
Four court, might, it doesn't have to be apartment building, but it could also be, uh, in a single-family home or a duplex or something where you have, where it's paved and you got cars pull in there?
No, no, it would be, no more of a
With an atrium at the, at the center.
Yeah, and so that you get a lot more windows, each unit gets a lot more windows, I think.
Yeah, and I think, um, I think
I mean, where some of it is, is set back, but some of it's set forward.
Yeah, it's like a huge shape.
So I think, um, the issue that we were having with this definition is the apartment complexes that are popping up, the way they define the courtyard. Some reason we kind of leverage against it is, is just, you know, a small, uh, basically, uh, it's not really a courtyard, but it's just, you know, like a, a small wall area. That would be like in front of this breezeway, so it doesn't really look like a courtyard at all, because it's not surrounded by any kind of walls or anything. Um, and that, you know, was getting approved in this definition. So by, I can review that, maybe we, um, just, you know, clarify what the four court courtyard is.
Right, you should say, no, that's not what we mean, another picture, you know, it's a gorgeous one, I think, right back of Bron, I, I don't, there are just gorgeous examples of these courtyard. And there are, our districts, sort of go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, uh, yeah, you're, I agree with you, Libby, the, um, part of our discussion, uh, ahead of this was exactly what you said, there's we couldn't think of any in Buford that existed, not saying that they, they couldn't exist. So the initial thought was, let's just strike it as a potential edit. Uh, but I think to Benji's point, the, the minimum twelve feet by twelve feet, that might need to be edited. I'd seen in a, another jurisdiction where it had been a minimum of sixteen feet by sixteen feet. And the, there had to be a height, uh, of two stories or more. Um, and there was a good example, like having, I think to, to Mike's point, having a good picture uh, of what we mean would go a long way here, because I think if we make it sixteen feet by sixteen feet and we show this image, I don't think there's any way that, uh, someone could misinterpret that, um, as we move forward.
The idea is to have windows on the inside of the four court that look down into a garden of some kind.
Yeah.
Jeremy, can you explain how this was being, uh, manipulated or by the David Burchard regime?
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I mean, I could tell you that the first one was that, that, uh, Garden Oaks, uh, that was the very first one that came through with it, and from what I recall, the twelve foot by twelve foot minimum was used in the breezeway and part of it went into the breezeway part came out, and then it was a garden wall that formed as it came out with a gate, um, and that's kind of where that started. And then, of course, as Benji mentioned, it became a launching point for others, um, going forward, yeah.
Ran into that, did we, Benji?
Yeah, and, and that goes further to, uh, when we get into, like, I, I really like it seems easy to me to have, when we get to multifamily, to really push for the single entry at each ground floor unit that faces a street, public way. And then clarifying the language of what a forecourt is versus what is a formal entry courtyard.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's
Yeah, yeah, I'm very excited with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what I can do too is
Yeah.
The minute.
Yeah.
What's the address of that one? Is that in Savannah?
Uh, no, this, this is what I'm talking, uh, in Connecticut, but I'll get you the one in Savannah, it's right near the, um, MPC building.
I've got, I've got the, um,
It's, um, where's MPC? It's like Hank's part of.
Old Street, this is City Hall right here.
Yeah, so it's to the right, maybe, um, I don't know. Okay, we gotta go up. I mean, the other way, I'm sorry, towards the south side. Okay, okay. Keep going, see Bron. Okay, now. Well, so keep going this way now, yeah, push it that way up. Oh, that's probably it, that's probably it. Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, that thing, I mean, I don't know, I just, um, yeah, I mean, it's not Buford, but I mean
Yeah, this is one in
St. Olks isn't Buford and, you know, all these huge apartment complexes, and this is more, I mean, again, it's a you find these in sister cities.
Look at this one, this one is in, same kind of thing, sure.
Anyway, I just wouldn't want, if somebody got really inspired, eliminate you.
Well, to Jeremy's point, I think if we're going to do that, unfortunately, it's going to be exploited, so we probably have to have a strong standard on if you use a four court, you have to have this amount of space.
The one going to be abused as a, as a, in a way of breezeway?
Well, these guy, I mean, they are guidelines. I don't know, I hate to do too prescriptive, ten by twelve, this because then, there's a workaround, but we know what they are, and we know what they're not, and I just, I don't know, you all could come up with, you know, dimensions or standards, but
Yeah.
I would
Well, let me ask you.
We can't do that, we have to do Garden Oaks.
Could it be as simple as if you're using a four court, you must use either individual entrances or a lobby?
Well, I think it's a lobby, because they go in for that
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe if we add a, a minimum dimension that's bigger than what we currently have and state that, um, uh, four court must be used with a, a lobby entry.
You know, because you might want, if, I don't know if they have entrances on, um, rotten or whatever that's
Yeah, that's true.
Or at State, whatever, but they might have both, you know?
Right.
One of the keys is that it's windows that are facing the
Yep.
courtyard, it gives so much light into those units, they're just I don't know, there's something about them that I just love.
Want to address it at the courtyard or a four court? Courtyard makes more sense.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I've always scored here.
Well, it sounds like everybody thinks it's worthwhile to keep, but it's just we have
Make the language.
We don't want to be too prescriptive, but at the same time, we don't want it to go down the path that it did before with the DRV.
Yeah.
Presley started getting said, and then it just was exploited, forget about
Yeah.
The entrances, right about the choir.
Now you're here and all here, so that's not going to happen again.
Something changed, right?
Yep.
All right, well, we'll work on that.
Original intent was to be able to, uh, satisfy the code by getting, uh, light and air into the backside of, of units. And not have just block, the problem that we have and that wound up coming out of that was like in New York, you know, you just had a light well. And so you get into those hotels and you're just looking straight across into another window. So I think your comment about having some dimensional qualities to what that is, so it's actually a courtyard as opposed to just a light well.
Yeah.
Would, would be mu- much more appropriate. Does anybody have any bar bar issues like that, other than that? Let's see. I, I do have one issue, um, Jeremy, and, um, and it would be consistent throughout here, um, where you have a, a slab on grade or anything where your siding comes down, um, right to grade, and I see that over and over again. And, you know, based on the code, your, your exterior, uh, materials, wha- whatever kind of siding there there, and it is, has to, uh, stay at least sixteen to eighteen inches above grade. And right now, our codes are allowing you not to do that. And if you go to page, I think sixteen, under, uh, foot, uh, historic district, uh, it's under the historic district, uh, number two, I think, is where I saw, saw that, but it's in different places in here where you're allowed to get down below that. I think even if you have a slab on grade, you'll have a turn down
Yeah.
Turn down slab, uh, so you, you can still, uh, get that, especially here. If, if you don't have at least sixteen to eighteen inches, you're going to rot the side.
Yeah.
So, so so that, that's just a, uh, construction issue.
Well, let's talk about that for a minute, because I did see in a couple jurisdictions where on single-family detached, um, there was a requirement that the first floor must be, uh, eighteen to twenty-four inches above, above the highest adjacent grade. And whether or not we would want to be that prescriptive on it, and I know that part of that's to your point, that you get that siding, uh, off the ground.
Yeah, I think it's necessary to do that, yeah. I mean, you would have the floor, essentially, you, you're going to have the floor sixteen to eighteen inches above grade, uh, just doing that.
Yep. Okay.
I think currently in T four and five, it's not similar. In T four, you have to do that anyway, I think it was just in T three, particularly S, idea was that's
If you look there on number eight on page.
Yeah.
It's starting about, adding.
But, but that's just a concern I have throughout the entire, the entire code here.
Would you all, no, I did this for the two and three story, and for the ten houses, the elevation allowed duplex, triplex, nearly elevated at least eighteen inches in height, but great. To avoid a slab on grade foundation.
Yeah.
Just copy that and insert it. Libby's not
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, look, go ahead.
Uh, I mean, it, I mean, like a race lab one grade, does that mean we can't do a race lab one grade?
You could do a race lab, you just have to set your finished floor eighteen inches, uh, above grade.
They're not eighteen inches.
No, it's not.
Right, right, so I'm just saying. So, Bill, honey, since we worked a lot of production home builders. I don't think. Not what I see out of Salem Bay.
They look like they're just right at grade level, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to see?
You know.
That's what we're trying to do, I think we're trying to prevent a sale, we're trying to prevent the, uh.
But I think what, when, uh. Chairman is saying is that. It's just kind of risky for what might happen here. Siding material, water infiltration.
Most people don't have a clue when they're having anything built. Uh, of standards that they need to have, and those are just standards.
Yeah. Their architectural. I'll get to the same investigation and everything, if you got the bolts right up there, and the level where the game is.
Yeah.
Need to raise the.
Well, yeah.
And. Uh, and I think if we know people got to have, whenever we decide it is, they're just gonna do it, right? I can't, I, it's hard to imagine it adds. That much to cost.
I can't imagine. Better, you know, design anyways, better result in two.
Yeah.
Plus costs, you know, down the road, I guess around opinion, that's actually. Agents.
Okay, so get rid of this, this height requirement. So all those things, and no, 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 just.
The house done on.
And in fact. And we should just, yeah, we should actually just.
You can always like, just rating so that the entry from rear, yeah, so, I mean, I'm thinking both sides, I've heard for some.
Yeah.
Years, uh. Objections to that.
I can see it adding any.
I think it makes sense, you know.
I, I, yeah, just surface run off this.
Okay, well, I think we updated this stack, we took out the historic.
I think there's some other details in here that we vary. Distances, uh, or. Um, frontages. Without some articulation, they differ in different sections, and I think. And we go through the detail, I might like to address those to see, you know, if, if we could be more consistent with.
I mean, obviously, it's really, it's more about administration, uh, with a lot of these details, I mean, even you may have to plant a tree in the front yard, is that. Something that you all are. Gonna be, you know, able to handle, or I, I don't know, that's how much is. Cost or slowdown things of. This is adding. Things for checklist if you have one, so. Or that, that council might ask those kind of questions, or. Well, instead of, I'll say for the plan review for single fan, instead of just looking at site setback or hi- in height. Now we've got a look, like a book grade, is there a tree? Garage, this and that, you know. It's just adding quite a bit more. Yeah, in some of these zones that it's not required to burn up.
It's always gonna be the drawback. It's just what kind of development you want.
So it's something rest about when. These issues may be erased by the council or.
Well, yeah, I will say that I drafted this based on the issues and Salem Bay, very in there. Homeowners are kind of, they're getting angry and upset, so it was no, kind of, split me really street trees, and then somehow. Whatever reason it got substituted, and then there was some kind of agreement with. Well, just not that they just planted a tree, but they didn't do any. So they were just sticking trees wherever the pillar was, after the fact, after people bought the houses, and they would come by like a year later and just stick a tree right next. Utility box or something, and so this was a concern, and, uh, also a concern about the landscapes they were putting in, and a lot of, we were getting a lot of complaints on there. When I started. Yeah. They were doing a, or a job where. Not great, so I mean, but we can get rid of it, it's just that was really just the response, not Jeremy, I was being, a response to the issues that eliminates from our lab.
Yeah, no, that's information to. To have, so thank you, Chris. Good to hear that.
Right. Can I put this for us? Yeah, apartment house, we're at four point five point seven, is that the category that refers to all apartment buildings going forward? So, I understand this, um. So just going down those, uh. Special, or, uh, twenty-one. Now, the blue is the new stuff, black, I guess, is the existing, but let me just ask on that existence, so frontage heights. Porches are not preferred. Uh, that's in the current code?
Yeah.
So what? What's the idea there, just I'm asking, so just for example, you look at the, the, the buildings along boundary with that. Uh, Dick Stewart, I guess he built those for USCB, those all have porches along there. Was there something wrong with that?
Well, it says they're not preferred unless, unless, or unless they, they provide direct access to the street, which they do.
But porches are not preferred, but may be used in buildings contain, I mean, people with apartments like porches, what's the problem? Yeah, that's.
Jeremy, you're open.
That's, I mean, that's always what people want, is if they can get a balcony, um, so they can sit out there, and usually those are the more expensive ones, you know. So many communities, and I know the ones that are the attractive, higher, you know, just attractive. They're attractive, they tend to get high rents. What's wrong with porches?
Do you, should we say porches should be used to provide direct access to the street?
Well, not as, when you can direct access to the street, if they're on the second floor. Third floor. They're.
Let's just remove it. Break it, what do you think, Jeremy? I would say strike.
I would think.
Well, if, if you strike it, you're. You're just saying frontage types are stoop, forecourt and balcony unless you add porch, uh, in there, and I, I do think that, as Libby said, porches. Can be, if they're done correctly, they can, I think the concern is. Do porches contribute on these large apartment complexes to the suburban nature of those at times?
Yeah.
If they're poorly designed.
I didn't hear that, because I've got a hearing problem, right? What do you say, what'd you say, Jeremy? Could you repeat that last sentence, Jeremy, please?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that sometimes if porches are not designed correctly on these large apartment buildings, it contributes to the suburban, uh. Uh, nature of these that isn't, isn't a good aesthetic, so we need to.
Oh, that. Porches are sort of an urban kind of feel, you know, people are encouraged to be out there in front of their homes, whether it's a house or an apartment, aren't they?
Well, I, I think if you don't have porches with direct access to ground. As, as your entry porch on your single family, that's the concern, is that all of a sudden, it's just a porch that has no direct connection to the ground, and it becomes very suburban in its feel.
Right, and your house, your porch have steps.
Yeah.
A walkway coming right down the street in these big complexes of, they've got like a little corral in front of a sliding door, and it's this. And then there's green grass, and then there's a sidewalk, and then the cars are facing right into the.
Well, that's no good.
Right, so that, that's, I think what this is saying is, yeah, go ahead and do a porch, but you have to do it like what they did, I think, is it called Ashley Point on Green Lawn Drive? Those might be stoops, but they have, it's multi-family, three-story, but each of these first floor units has a front door and a. Covered porch and steps that come right down to the sidewalk, that's great, yeah.
And that, but, and then the units above it, I, I just was like, thinking of those are porch, but maybe you call it balcony.
Yeah.
And balcony is in here too.
Yeah.
That, but that's different, we're not, we're not discouraging use of balconies in wealthy story apartment buildings.
No.
Would you like to just make a note of that, maybe we can read?
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll revisit, how's that, we'll just highlight that in those.
And then I'm just, and then go down a, a couple there, it says parking, onsite parking must be located behind the building and accessed up a rear alley. I mean, the, this whole alley concept, I, alleys are very familiar to me in, in an urban, single-family, mostly single-family setting. And, and they're narrow, and they have, you know. Full and parking off them, or carriage houses off them, or rear entry garages, but how do you really? At, at the use of a term of an alley in apartment community, it just doesn't seem to be to work, I mean, basically. You have parking oftentimes on all sides of these apartment buildings. And they're, they're basically just parking lots, they're buildings set in the middle of parking lots, and frankly, they're the most proactive way to design a parking, uh, uh, apartment community. Because people want to have. For, for safety purposes, they want to have quick and easy access to their unit, they don't want to have to walk a long way.
Are, are you, are you?
I'm just wondering why, I'm just wondering, it says onsite parking must be located behind the building and accessed up a rear alley. It just seems to me that it's hard to design an apartment community if you're. If you have a, and it's, it's also expensive, if you have a street in front of a apartment building. And you can't park off of it, and you gotta have a separate parking behind the building.
Well, I think the goal would be you would have. Street parking in front of the building, but, you know, maybe that can be re, but is your comment because alleys are small and, um.
I guess I'm getting at, when you're in a, in a, in a suburban apartment. I agree that the buildings ought to be attractive. Uh, and in the, in this area, part of, you know, include our little country, but I, and I think they should have amenities, they should have dog parks, and they should have. Playgrounds, and, and if they're, if, if the rents are high enough, you can have clubhouse and pools and all that stuff, but the whole idea of making it impossible to design these things. Because we're so specific on where the parking should be located, I mean, we've had some of those cases, never made it to us at the planning commission, because. We have these, these design guidelines about where the streets are, and where the alleys are, and where the parkings are. Person couldn't figure out where the front of the building was, and the back of the building was, and where the parking is, I just think that we sometimes. Make it hard to design apartment communities, especially in terms of parking, when the practical way to do it is have parking on the. If they're big enough buildings, is, you have parking on all sides of them.
Well, I think, I think street parking would make sense, but the whole point of the form base code, you'd be. You'd be basically, that's the whole point of the form base code, is that there's a liner building, and apartments that.
Yeah, you're really, but you're getting, but you're, but you're. There's a difference between the urban form and the suburban form.
Yeah.
And, and we shouldn't expect the suburban form of our apartment to look the same as store apartments on the boundaries. What I'm saying.
Well, I was trying to say that this should add, like, street parking should be allowed, onsite street parking, or. How can it should be allowed, or are you saying that just a whole big parking lot should be allowed?
I think that parking lots, it should be landscaped, there should be sidewalks, there should be all of these things. Depending on the size of the parcel and the configuration, you look at some of these apartment communities, even the new ones along, uh, just, uh. For example, that new skinny one all along, what's it called, Pinhead Point or something like that?
Yeah.
It's, and they just got parking on one side of the building, what is that? Can't have an alley behind it, you couldn't, if, if, and, and I think that it's a perfectly good place to put an apartment building, it's a narrow lot, practically speaking, you're not gonna have. Uh, uh, parking behind it, there only is one side to the building, there's a building, and then there's a second lot. But then you look at some of these larger apartment communities we have too, and I'm not sure that, that our argument with them in the suburban form. Is about where the parking is located as much as.
You couldn't do that at, at the T, T five.
Well, look at that, look at the ones that we see the most obvious, the big one next to, uh, the low is, just before you get to the lows, at, at Robert Smalls Parkway, what is our real gripe about that one?
I don't know, I really haven't been.
Well, you can't miss it going by, we all go by all the time, I mean, I think if there's any gripes about it, what would be your gripe about it?
Um, connection, huh, connection, there's like, not very many connections, connection one, two, um, like existing. You know, you, and it's only connected to the. One side, and, you know, there was a chance to connect to the backside, and two, you know, to that apartment in the back, and then there's another.
Well, it can reach to the street system, but other than that, I mean, design maybe, it's, maybe it was just too much, this is. Too many, exactly the same, yeah.
Yeah. You're talking about parking versus architecture.
And that's what I'm saying.
Leave it at parking, I, I think there's a conflation here between apartments that are more individually. Uh, uh, associated with, uh, uh, with a main street versus a, a campus that has been developed like the one that. Thereby lows.
Right.
And if you develop the campus, um. You have more flexibility to do things. Uh. And I think. You know, we have land availability. Behind the apartments is better than having parking in front of the buildings. But, uh.
But you might have.
Your street park.
You might have a building that's big enough where it's got units on all sides of the building. You know, so what is the front, and what is the back, you might have double fronted buildings, and so claiming that one side has to have an alley entrance, that's all I'm saying. My, and my point about that project was not, my point was that what most people see and complain about, now you looked at, one of the things was the access to the street system. Other people might say it's the architecture. So I look at it, I go, where's the landscaping? You know, but I'm not saying that it's layout overall, in terms of where the parking is relative to the entrance of the buildings, and that's all I'm saying by this thing is. If you put in there and you say that every building has to be accessed off an alley, it may be possible, depending on the size of the apartment community and so forth, to design an apartment.
Well, I think, you know. I think you could probably just remove the first sentence. Uh, and then it's not must be, but it's basically saying should not front the primary right over there, and it's still basically. You know, it's symbolizing all of the form base, you know, it's embodying all of those principles.
Here's just an idea, that we won't resolve it today, but this might be a good idea for a field plan. Because we complain about these apartment communities a lot, maybe we go out one day. One afternoon and go through some of these apartment communities, drive through them, and just say, what are the design elements that? We don't want to see replicated. You know, both layout, you know, site design and blue design, that might be a good way for us to come around to analyzing the apartment designs.
I think one case study that you probably will. In the preserve.
Yeah, see, I can't without seeing it, I can't think of what one is.
That one, yeah, it's, it's just apartments. In a parking lot, basically. There's no street, you know, things, which no.
Well, do you agree to that?
Uh, it's in Port Royal, like, um, like, in M H B.
I mean, there's, there's.
I don't know.
Royal Street View.
There's.
But again, that's been, that's basically very similar to what you have heard of Point Ground and Water Crusts.
I mean.
You know, they're trying to get like, you're trying to create like this urban form of apartments, but in a suburban nature, and it gets, it just doesn't. Without the regulations changing, it's not working.
Now, now. So this is the one that, this is one that I'm sort of saying is, from a parking standpoint, it works, there may be other things we don't like about it, but. Everybody gets to park real close to their front door, right?
That's true.
And isn't that, there's some value to that from a security standpoint? Which is, which is something we gotta think about at these places.
My dog lives there, and I like that aspect of it.
You like the aspect of security?
They got sidewalks, it's all, I mean, you know, I can, it's walkable, it's sort of.
Headlights coming into your person, let's go, can you go to Green Lawn Drive?
Yeah, the headlights going into a unit might not be a great thing.
Inwalkability. And go to Ashley Point, and you have a street view of like. Those guys. Up there, I'm sorry, those with the blue roofs. Street view on Green Lawn, yeah, like, like right there. Yeah. Now, this is a low-income housing tax credit project, wait, and let me go. Yeah, 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 see, on there, maybe walk the street a little bit, now, see, they. Okay, yeah, and they have their little porches.
Those are pretty neat.
Yeah, and now they've got on-street parking, the first floor units have a door directly access the street, the porch, the problem there, they're not eight feet deep. I think they were six feet, so there was a little flexibility there, everybody. This is on Green Lawn Drive, in back of Buford Town Center, now, again, those are low-income housing tax.
Yeah.
Projects, so, now that is a nice, I mean, a nice.
Urban form, is it a secure place?
No, I mean, they got sidewalks and street trees and street lights and, you know, the people that face Green Lawn. you know, the people that face Green Lawn, they face a real street, just like probably we all live on a real street, not in a parking lot.
I mean, I think Bill was pointing out, this is what the code is wanting every apartment to look like, something like this.
Now, in the back, the parking is, you know, more, let's say, suburban in style. See, they've got a parking lot sort of where the cursor is. But they're not. You're not like.
So my only question about that, that is nice. I agree. It looks better. But does everybody have an equally safe and secure access to the building? Or do some people get stuck in having to walk around the building to carry their groceries?
But they walk, they can, if you park in the back, you walk through the building. So. But again, on the public street, the Green Lawn Drive.
That looks great.
Yeah. And again, that's a low income housing tax credit project, the same funding that was used, well, part of the same funding for Salem Bay.
But that happens to have part of it actually is, that is actually a public street there opposed to just apartment uh, parking. But is that possible to do in every park, in every apartment community? Or just was that because of its location?
Well, I mean, I would say that the code, the current guidelines say that you need to build new buildings on a street that really.
But they've done that. They've built their own streets in there.
Right. And the bats, now those might be private, you know, in the back, but they did build real streets because they were required to. Now, this wasn't under this code. It was under the Boundary Street Redevelopment District Code, but it was the same idea. It did it.
Well, there's no question, but it's very.
They're connected. Those people are connected.
Also able to use consistent building. So they were able to duplicate the same building essentially, but still make it work within a, a, a better streetscape.
And I have some pictures. I don't know if that showed at the street view, but some of those porches, I mean, people put decorations out there. I mean, they're proud to live there. I I would say, or they're not ashamed to live there. They they're having their little pumpkins at Halloween and, you know, they got.
So let me ask you a question to keep that moving. Go back to the, just in your mind to that one that's been that we've all go past it on Robert Smalls Parkway near the Lowe's. Could that have been designed to look like this one?
It could have.
I don't know why they couldn't.
I mean, with all that land.
They had it. They're just asking, you know.
That was just for a really poor design.
And why wasn't it that? Was it just because in that district wasn't required or nobody cared? Cause that provision was already in the code that said on street, onsite parking must be located behind the building and access up.
And they tried to do it. So you can kind of see, like, so this is, you know, parallel parking right here, and this is little parking right here. And this is kind of, you know, the, the behind. So they are doing it. But it's not, you know, it's not the edges are not as strong as that.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Well, plus, as you said, they're not connecting back into the, the one from the back.
Yeah, you know, so this is like the future commercial areas. So that could create, you know, a better edge. And then this, the interior parking here. Interior parking here.
Oh, so that's though not Hanover Park.
That's playground.
Okay.
This is, this is the one that are just connecting to it.
Yeah, Bill's talking about the one.
I guess this is right there. I mean, this one. This one doesn't have any kind of, yeah. Well, the original plans were that this, this traffic circle was supposed to connect Hanover Park to Point Ground and Garden Oaks. The original plans actually had that in there and you can still, we were out there, we could still see the stub. They never bothered to actually do, make that connection. I don't know. It was missed, but there was supposed to be a connection to Garden Oaks.
Yeah, so they could come out of Vertant Hill and make that left-hand turn up at one side.
Yeah, exactly.
I can't tell you why.
Oh, that's the one. Well, okay, they're both shown there.
Couldn't the city condemn that and and make it connect?
I mean, we could, but that may be accessing there privately. I mean, I guess we could. But is the city gonna force them to build the stub or would the city build the stub?
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking if, 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 if everybody liked, I mean, playing that, the example you gave of the one off of Evergreen or whatever it was, is a beautiful design. If, if we can achieve that, um, look through the language here still, then I just don't want to make it impossible.
Jeremy's got 10 more minutes, so.
He's just waiting for this.
Do you like to stay? With the, all the kind of stuff? You hear us?
Hello?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Now I can, yeah.
Some are eyesight, or did you have anything to add to the discussion about multifamily and parking and?
I mean, I, uh, I think that what Benji just looked at and what you just discussed, discussed at, um, Green Lawn Libby was exactly kind of where this was headed, you know, we enforcing the streets, enforcing the single entry at ground floor. Porches, uh, it, you know, with the single entry is I, I think it does lend itself to really good development that we have been fighting to, to try to promote. I don't have anything else to add specifically. If y'all have any questions on looking at the comments that are in there from a vernacular standpoint.
But can we just add one thing about liner buildings? Cause going to what Paul's issues were at that previous meeting. These second story, um, second story of these liner buildings often, for example, the outlets, you know, on the main street of our large shopping center, they're hard to rent. And I get the idea of trying to get some stature to the buildings. But is there a way to get some stature to the outline buildings without requiring that it be occupiable space on a second floor?
Oh, I just, I did make a change. I changed it to 16 feet and then if you go down, uh, seven.
What, what? Face is.
Twenty-eight. Then we added a pedestrian activity for liner buildings on the two stories and height of south base to primary school, it's not accurate. Pedestrians not to include, not limit to an accurate plus or around of how you're going. I did something, so.
Kurt, can I, um?
You can fix it.
No, I want to share my screen if I can real quick. Okay, make sure I get the right screen.
The thought with that was you could, don't have to do two stories, but you have to do a little more height, right? And, and then you have to activate pedestrian area in front of it.
Yeah. So this, that kind of started, uh, this is in Mount Pleasant heading, Binsawyer Boulevard, heading out to Sullivan's Island.
We're not, we're not seeing it.
Oh, you're not seeing it? All right, hold on, I was like, I'm about to drop the little man. Uh, what's going on here? You're seeing my agenda right now. Now you're seeing it, right?
Yeah, slowly, slowly, yeah.
Okay, sorry. So Mount Pleasant, Binsawyer Boulevard, heading out to Sullivan's Island. There's a big building back here and two liner buildings at the front. Now, these are not two-story, but what they really have is they're a little taller in height, they have a higher pitched roof. But what they have is pedestrian activation. Uh, and so there may be some creative ways to, to to really push that. You don't have to add to a two-story building unless it's within the 250-foot radius of a major intersection. You might be able to do it with just a more of a presence of your roof, the height of the, of plate height, you know, being maybe 16 feet, as Kurt said. And porches or pedestrian spaces, but they, along with landscaping, it does a really good job of screening the big building behind.
Right.
Now, part of the criteria with the lineability, they also have to have the pedestrian seating and, and commercial activities going on on the sidewalk.
Well, that
The sidewalk cafe.
Thing I put in there was like you could do less than two stories if you did that. That was just an idea.
Yeah.
You're thinking of a two-story to do the sidewalk cafe?
Cause there's so many people walking down Boundary Street. Finally.
Well, I see, see the, the.
This is, this works nicely. And one of the reasons that it works, the city, come back, you see the the maximum setback out of the Boundary Street rules now is 15 feet. If that were moved to maybe even 20 feet or, or have some ability to adjust, you could then add in some of these elements, um, and create a more of a pedestrian oriented seating out front facing the street and so forth, whereas right now you you really can't. So I, I I think this is great. And, um, what's the make of that car?
What's the killer?
So what we want to do is we want to have activity along the street. Sure. We want to make sure that it it screens what's behind it. Uh, so we have to be, and we like the idea of always having landscaping uh, along our streets. So we might.
Would we want to, would we want to designate a specific setback as Paul's suggesting?
Well, I have 24 feet in there, but that might be too wide, to be honest with you. But we'll have to we'll have to do a a corresponding change to the Boundary Street District or the T five U C. It'll have to be like a foot or an intersection.
We're talking about Boundary and also Robert Smalls, right?
But you're getting away from the two-story or the false second story. Is that correct, Paul?
Well, that's correct. Again, I, I Except for, except for the one I had, except they would set on intersections that would still be.
You're still, you're 250 feet of, of an intersection?
Just intersections now, it's 250. You could do one story, I think.
I would, I would argue that, that this product frames the street and provides a much better streetscape than necessarily just having a, a, a two-story. And, you know, yeah.
See, it's a lot of Florida.
Well, and it, and it doesn't take a two-story building to screen a two-story because perspective is, you know, you're always looking up. I mean, a one-story building will screen a two-story building, will screen a three-story building if this three-story building's setback.
If you're a pedestrian or in a vehicle and you're traveling down the street, I mean, you're not going to see what's behind that under any circumstances.
Under any circumstances.
So I think that, I think the addition of, of nice landscaping and the ability to have uh, pedestrian oriented patios and all facing the street like that. As you can see, there's a wide enough boulevard between those buildings there. There's a pedestrian boulevard that's very inviting that goes out to the street and then also connects the parking to the rear. So people don't mind walking up that. You know, to, to visit the building. And then you can put your, your work area more towards same, yeah. That's a better, that's a great example right there.
Jeremy, how far back do you think those, um, buildings are set, let's say, from the sidewalk? If the sidewalk's the edge of the right away.
It's a good question. Let's say.
So Jeremy, I think 20 feet because that's what I had estimated.
Yeah, I would say that's probably 20 feet from the back of the sidewalk to, to this face here. Now, if you look ahead, that face aligns, but what comes, hangs over is that kind of porch area, which kind of protrudes into that. So this one may actually be 10 feet back from the sidewalk.
But you can have encroachments, you know, into this was that back area?
Correct. Yeah.
So that might be something to look, so there's currently a 30-foot minimum, minimum. No, whatever. So now it might go to 20, to allow a little more flexibility.
Fix that, but I'm glad you liked it.
That was very inviting.
So with the, you know, what is the thought? If you go back to that code section, you want to keep it with the two stories just on an intersection or just get rid of that altogether and you go out? So we'll work on that pedestrian activity.
I'd get rid of the two-story even at the intersection, because I just.
So I think we remove that, but when attached, are you okay with just removing?
Could, could the architect say, would a 24-foot height, which I, what's currently in the code, would that be sufficient, Jeremy, to achieve the look that you're, that you've got there?
Yeah, I mean, if you think about those buildings that we were just looking at, uh, I, I mean, I'm estimating that plate height's probably 16 feet. And the picture of that roof, you could easily probably get to the ridge, get close to 24 feet.
That works.
Yeah.
24 foot at the ridge. But if we have some photographic evidence that goes along with it so that the uh, designer contractor actually know what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, this, this would be a picture that we would, would provide and Maria will be happy to go, uh, put a measuring tape next to it.
Yeah.
In terms of construction methodology, um, once, let's say, the one-story building is built, is it possible to go back and add another story? Let's say if the land becomes so valuable or we want to go back and we really want to add second floor for housing or offices, how difficult is that generally to? Plan in front of the get-go?
Yes, you have to plan structurally to support a future.
Yeah.
Right.
That is a foundation.
Right, yeah. Grate beamed and putting.
In general, that wouldn't be done unless you anticipate.
Right.
Okay.
You design for the single-story structure and go with that way, yeah.
I think the important thing here is that I, if everybody likes to speak into, you know, I think it creates there was a lot of concern that you're creating like this ridiculous, you know, this big building that's, you know, has fake windows and it's not used at all. And it's just, you know, not functional just for the purpose of this code. But, you know, the goal of the form-based code was this urban density, right? And in a certain form, but if you feel like this form is creating that pedestrian activization, you know, that corridor that you're looking for, it seems like we could do something like that and not harm form-based code while, while eliminating the certainty maybe of.
That, that, what Jeremy just showed us is, is very workable.
Yes.
That, that works.
And is Beaufort really going to be all three or four stories everywhere? I don't know that anybody wants it to be, so that we.
The market, the market's not there at this time.
Yeah.
So I think it's better than a number two.
Two stories.
Yeah. Because I mean, I think you're seeing like the, the car larch out there, the, the car wars that we were looking at, um, you know, your buildings, like you're saying, you know, they can't rent out that space. So and if they're forced to build it, then you're forcing them to have the space.
Right.
This will be useless and never be reused.
Before, before Jeremy leaves, may I just add one more comment for his opinion, please?
Sure.
So Jeremy, uh, please recall the Tank Five Oil, uh, that's recently finished uh, on Robert Smalls.
Yeah.
And that building, of course, has an additional has an addition placed on it in order, I believe, to meet the frontage requirement. And to, to this day, it's, it's still vacant. And my guess is it's going to remain that way for quite a while. And now we thought is that if, 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 if the frontage in that particular case were relaxed, I mean, they could have planted a big, beautiful live oak tree right there. It could have been you know, a lot more inviting. I mean, this meets the, the code, but it really doesn't function. And I don't think it's ever going to function. It's a 600 square foot office connected to an oil change business. I, I I just, I just don't see that that really works. And there could be something else that, you know, landscaping perhaps is an alternative, you know, more intensive landscaping there, given the nature of that particular business.
Yeah, and there was more to it. I mean, thinking about that particular business, it needed, the building also more than just frontage, it needed to screen the cars that were coming, you know, off of Robert Smalls and queuing up and then going into the bays and then coming out. It was a definite challenge for them as a program on this specific site. Uh, whereas like, for example, Mavis Tire on Ladies Island, the, the building itself could be placed at the street. They had plenty of, of opportunity to put the parking behind it and get the storage bays on the opposite side of that street and then do their Mavis Tire, you get out of your car, you go into a lobby, you sit and wait on your vehicle. So they actually had a So they actually had a storefront program, but this whole business model from take five was, was a challenge because you don't get out of your car. There's no reason to get somebody out of their car. So they proposed a, what was it, Maria, a cat? Doggy something, I don't know, uh, that obviously they did not have a tenant for, so.
That sort of brings up that issue about those, let's say, types of businesses, I guess, where you don't get out of your car, the car washes that have been built like right up against it. Those are very difficult to handle in terms of setbacks and frontages and that kind of. It's almost like they need to be set back, you know?
Right.
We don't have to accommodate every use on every street, right? In other words, if it doesn't work, then it just doesn't work. You know, and so it's meant to be in something or not so that they can be on that site. I don't know that we have to make sure that they.
Right. Especially on Boundary Street, which was redesigned to try to, let's say, increase pedestrian activity and street, you know, people on the street, and that's a long stretch of, you know, where there's no activity. You're not getting a hot dog or ice cream or coffee or you're, I don't know. So there, there might be something there that.
Yeah.
Where that T five U C R M X kind of issue, issue happens. Cause some of these are, are, you know, probably more R M X type use versus a T five.
Yeah. The ground hanging the square.
Exactly, exactly, well, that's right, that's, yeah.
And the problem is that's where there's a market, right? It's where, you know.
You know, people that are going to.
I mean, there goes to the question of the market, I think.
Well, it's.
I just, in that particular case, I think that, you know, they could still perhaps operate that business there, but you know, with the screening, the buffering of the cars in the rear could have been accomplished with some landscaping perhaps.
Yeah, I, I think we also wanted to avoid, um, we've seen, uh, the frontage trying to be met with like a, a garden wall and things like that, so, um, it is a challenge. I think to, to Libby's point, maybe this is a use category that should not be placed up at a street. It needs to be set some distance back, maybe it needs a liner building in front of it. Um, so those are maybe some considerations we might need to look at for especially a use case like take five. Car washes as well.
Well, if you have to go, Jeremy, we'll take.
Yeah, yeah, well, I appreciate, uh, being a part of this and, uh, I'll get any notes from you, Kurt, Christopher, Nicholas, uh, as we move forward.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you, all right, bye.
Sure, the car washes, we might just be at a point where we finally saturate. It's like, how many of them could there be?
The national trend.
Storage facilities or car washes, that's it.
I was talking with somebody about the, uh, firm the other day about the economics of these things because I was seeing it not in the Buford contract, so it's like Coleman is like, it says that you seem endless. Once they came up with all the automated stuff, you don't have to have anybody in them anymore. And, and they, when they came up with the technology to recycle all water, they don't have a water bill anymore. Cause they just, they clean that soapy water and they reuse it and their costs keep coming down. And the money just must be, and then with the people that buy these, these memberships, which, you know, it's like, it never occurred to me. Car wash membership, but I guess people are doing it.
Seem they should be a pedestrian oriented street. Car wash, but again, as you're saying, you have the A streets, you know, pedestrian, your highest level of design and that kind of thing, and then you have your B streets where a little more.
Well, they want to be where, because they don't do any other advertising. They want to be, what they're advertising is to be at that, where all the cars are.
Well, let's, uh, make, I have a chunk of three is the, I know I mentioned it was like a vehicle service station, seven T five, you see that? I think this is a good, we'll make that note about that, et cetera. Car washes, we need to, uh, to. You making them, making or hip it them or?
Give it more thought, I don't know, it's something, they're just design-wise, they're so hard to deal with, I, I mean, just what I think after this.
With our form-based codes, they're not too thrilled.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, I know down in like Southern California, Orange County especially, down towards San Clemente, we're going down towards San Diego. All of the cities have requirements that it has to follow the Spanish Mexican look. Even the car washes look like adobe structures and, you know, in New Mexico or something like that. You think you're in Taos, but you're actually in Irvine. But they all follow that look and whether it's McDonald's or whether it's a car wash or, or a brake guy, it's, it's, it's Adobe, I'm going to call it Adobe, you know, if you have the red tile and everything else. So, I mean, they do do it, it can be done, yeah. And they also have a sign requirement that, I don't know, even the McDonald's signs have to be like a certain height. They can't be way up in the air and stuff, anyway.
Including limited, like, we limit gas stations.
Space in or?
Yeah.
If you'd like to go there, we may want to change it to the drive-through car wash section.
After this. Well, let's just say they're getting better looking, it shifts them very much. There's still challenges.
So if you'd like to go there and thank real good drive-through facilities. That's where you're trying to pick some gas, page thirty-four.
Well, what's happened is the gasoline stations in the city has really kind of gone away. I mean, the one on Boundary here has gone away. Probably doesn't need to be there, probably doesn't need to be a fuel station there. You know, it seems to get their gas out in Rebo Road. They were supposed, presented an end market at one time and they've got a pretty large lot, but they've never built it.
Now, a lot of the used ones because of the, the tanks and stuff, they can't sell their new properties.
And they take a guessing out of, of Rebo and.
Yeah.
Rebo, the bridge towards. Yellow Parkers Kitchen.
Access problem. Well, that happens a lot, you know, as what roads get widened, what used to be the most valuable parcels in, on the street, you know, the corners suddenly become the least valuable because you can't get to them anymore. And that was, I think, a good example of that.
I think that new parkers in the Buford station turned up.
Yeah, it, it, it seems okay.
Yeah.
And those, and those type stations seem to be meeting the market need properly. And they seem to address the needs. And so you really don't need, um, fuel stations up and down Boundary or on Rebo Road anymore. Uh, maybe in certain areas, you know, the ones that are still there are the little smaller ones. You know, there's one at, what, First Boulevard, I think it is, and then you've got one at the intersection of Mossley Oaks across the street and, uh, I think that's it. You know, they eliminated one, as Bill mentioned, at the foot of the bridge, that one's gone. And so then the next one in line is the, is the parkers there at, at Paris Avenue. So they've all sort of been falling by the wayside anyway. I don't, I don't, I think if you were going to eliminate or, or limit uh, a type of auto-centric business, the fuel station would be one that probably is not appropriate uh, on Boundary or Rebo. You don't see one on, going down, there isn't one on Boundary Street anymore, except for the one in Hogarth, it's on the corner.
There's the end mark on Boundary.
Oh, excuse me, there is a shell, an older shell station with that beat-up car wash right there.
Yeah, it's intended, uh, but there's a, the vacant gas station there that's a white one that's.
Fine.
And for a while, hopefully, somebody will put something in there eventually. But I think there's two on Boundary, aren't there? Uh, or is there just one, the end mark or?
There's a shell.
There's a shell, yeah, the shell.
Is the General Store on Boundary, does he still sell gas?
Some.
We had a couple of little pumps up front.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, little Indian guy owns that. He's looking for, yeah.
Gas pumps.
Yeah, these new, you know, this is kind of trying to accomplish, I think, through design, but while in these areas, um, were the comments on this Libby or did you just feel like it just weren't appropriate? The goal of this was to try to improve all the regulations so it's a little more clear. I'm worried we have more of a, especially in lieu of like Chipotle and the bank. I can't guarantee that. Rewrite it so it's clear that there, you know, not, there's not this interpretation. It's the goal of this and then to make it more of a little.
Under it, okay, the, the question I have here is, it feels, page thirty-six, uh, E at the top, um, heading, heading the liner building.
You mean where it says for a standalone car wash that or something?
Do we need a liner building? I mean, everything we've been describing here doesn't have a liner building. I don't know that it adds anything, most of these.
It's an either or, or it can be, yeah. You either have to face away from the primary street or be screened from the street with a light. It's a either or. You know, if you had a liner building that would take care of the environment, you don't, then you have to screen away from the street. Does this make sense?
Right? If I may, I'd like just to make a comment about the change on the drive-through. Of course, you know, I've kind of explored the South Atlantic Bank. Chipotle is a little bit of a different animal. We, we couldn't go back far enough and then we, the city wouldn't allow me to move the sign. I could have built a, a landscape screen and I was willing to do that, but it didn't work out. In any case, that one is very mildly used and there's really no stacking. It's not particularly visible to Boundary.
Is it, is it causing problems for the, for Chipotle, the, without adequate stacking lane or something or no?
No, no, there's not a problem with that because they, they have a technology that you have to buy it in advance and pay for it in advance. You don't order there, you know, you just simply get in the line when it tells you to pick it up and it's ready.
Oh, that's, that's their, not just unique to that particular store, but that's the way it is.
That's the way they do it, okay, corporately.
Okay.
So, uh, I would argue that the bank, uh, South Atlantic Bank, you know, exemplifies the type of thing that you want to see. It is.
Can you put that one up there?
I've driven around that on my bike, that is.
That's the new one, right at the entrance in front of the public?
Yes, sir, and, and my, my argument would be, so they did do traffic studies, uh, on that one to try to get it in the rear. Um, and it, it just didn't function and it ultimately was going to cause a stacking problem with the entrances going into the, into the property, but now that it's there, uh, it does have.
So where's the drive-through, how do you, how do you circulate there?
Come right there and.
Where's the drive-through?
It goes right here. You come through and.
Oh, right in the front, okay.
There's a, a metal fence on a brick wall and then that is screened by podacarpus to the rear, which eventually will be a complete.
Wait, how do you circulate out that? I can't, I was not getting it, can you, where do you enter and where do you exit?
You, you enter right here.
Okay.
You come in.
Yeah.
Where they have the colors.
And you turn this way.
Okay.
Come right around and then you go underneath, this is.
Oh, that, you go underneath that?
Yeah, and it's, and it's screened with a living wall.
Oh, okay, that's beautiful.
And then this is a, a living wall. So, yeah.
Did you have the invariances or something?
I had to go to the ZB away.
And, and what was the, and that was a variance for design?
To, to allow the drive-through to go around the family building.
Yeah.
But the, the, the argument that I would make is that you, you can't see it and the you might be able to see it because the landscape's not fully mature at this point, but it will be. And the podacarpus, of course, makes a very substantial hedge. And so there's no damage. I mean, it, there's, it, it's, it looks really nice, it's an institutional, I mean, it's a high-quality looking building. Uh, it's the type of business that is desirable.
It really looks good.
It does not injure pedestrian traffic. I mean, you can, pedestrians can come in and out, there is a functional front door that goes right to the sidewalk.
You walk through the drive-through?
Uh, it just crosses over, it, it, it crosses over right there. So if you were walking along the street,
Yeah.
you could turn and enter, enter the bank.
But you got to get between a car, there are two cars stacked.
There's a raised, there's a raised area there. And so it's, uh, uh, anyway.
Yeah.
I, I think that if you wanted to restrict, you ought to at least allow a special exception based on good design, uh, to, to allow it, that would be my argument. And it's she hidden, I, I fully agree with that.
I'd rather always have a, some kind of special exception in our code for that kind of design than forcing somebody to go to Boza. I just don't like revision of the state statute in South Atlantic way that basically says Boza gets to trump everything that was in our code and just write a new code section, because that's basically what it does. I would rather have a special design exception within our code that says if you do it this way, you automatically get to do it. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, we should have something that.
Does that make sense?
I think so, good talks about issue. Form, form is critical, but form does need to work with functionality.
Well, yeah, and maybe we don't call it, except maybe it's just a design alternative. You know, there's the, there's the preferred design and then there's a design alternative in certain types of statuses so that they're allowable by our code without somebody making it up on the go and just roll the dice with Boza. You see what I'm saying? Because that's the thing I have a problem with, Boza, under the, the authority of the statutes in this case, they, they just basically get to tell somebody, well, you wrote the code this way, but we're going to allow you to do it this other way. You see what I'm saying? And it's just a way to get around everything that we write. Whereas if we write our own special, uh, what, what we say not exception, but design alternative, we know what's potentially coming because we've, we've provided for it. That Atlantic Bank thing is a good example, I think of. It was innovative.
But what we want, I mean, we spent, of the public spent thirty-three million dollars to try to make Boundary Street more walkable, bikable, more safe, attractive and convenient to alternative forms of transportation. So I don't think adding drive-throughs ramping around buildings.
But we'll just look at this one.
After, uh, Mr. Tras sent the, you know, the nice memo outlining, you know, the after action report, nice landscaping, but the back is what happens when the next tenant comes in? And what happens when the next building is built and they have their drive-through around there? The landscaping is, can come and go very quickly.
Well, you're right about that.
And I just don't know why, we, it isn't that you can't have a drive-through, it just has to be in the back. Why does it have to be back up front, front and center? Here's, you know.
Five lanes of traffic, little sidewalk, and now I've got a drive-through on the other side? And I mean, that is just. Well, let's put it this way, there are, there are good, there are good drive-throughs in there, but this one just seems like it turned out to be a really good-looking drive-through.
As opposed to the one.
As opposed to Chipotle.
And it went to the ZB away. My hero's day, right?
It was literally my first day here. Our community, we spent a lot of money, wasn't all our dollars exactly, but it was, you know, a lot of federal money and so forth, and you're right. And so there is, we have constructed a pedestrian path, but Boundary Street is, is always going to be an auto-centric street. It's not, it's not really a, a true walkable street, but we've provided for, for that. We, we can bicycle there, uh, and we can walk there, no question about it. And that example does not injure one's ability to walk and bike on.
Now, what is that building right there in the upper? That's Chick-fil-A. So I agree with you, Libby, if you just do a ninety-degree turn on that Chick-fil-A and all of a sudden the drive-through is right there along Boundary, that would be very good looking, right? But all I'm saying is that I think Atlantic Bank found a way to do it where it actually aesthetically worked.
I just can't see replicating that up and down Boundary Street.
You wouldn't want to do it ten times.
And I think, remember about pedestrians and what you said today. We've got two new apartment complexes that are built, finished, just occupied, just up the street. Both low income housing tax credit product, projects, I don't know, like two hundred more households just up the street there. Okay, yeah. And then just further along, we've got the, um, you know, Mr. Stewart's, the Pearl, that's, you know, a hundred units or so of, you know, so there's a lot more pedestrian activity.
Yeah.
Possibilities on Boundary Street and we need to be thinking about that. And some of these low income, and I would say maybe the, you know, studio apartment dwellers, they may not have cars. Or, you know, if there's a multi-person household, there may only be one car. So we really, really need to be thinking about that.
Well, it sounds like, just to summarize, has everybody gone through, you know, I think this new code requirements, you know, is that a benefit? Being, you know, I think the main conversation here is, do we keep the form-based code the way we've got it, which is always to the rear? Do we allow a design exception? I think that's what's being proposed by Bill is that in some circumstances with certain conditions, you know, this might work. What, should that be in the T five UC district? Should that be on Boundary Street?
Well, I agree with, I, I, I hear Libby. I hear, I hear Libby completely. I mean, I understand what you're saying, particularly when you're building apartments along the corridor, you want it so that people that don't have cars, and a lot of those won't when they're low income, where, where there are places they can walk to as opposed to, because they're not going to utilize the, the, the drive throughs. Um, and but I guess my point I keep coming back to is, is, is if Boza is always a back door to, to, we've designed a code this way, but Boza is always a back door where somebody gets to go there with their own design. And if they get enough, a majority of votes, they get it approved no matter what.
Well, and in this case, it says rear and so this case it says rear and, I mean, honestly, the, the set of facts on that bank was so, I, I think it would be exactly. This is my first day here, so I, I was, was, was just, there was a lot of communication, I think, with the staff and change and there was change in the director and interim director was, was being told to them and and it proposed, I think that's, they had appealed based on that. So it was a very unique set of circumstances. Whereas, you know, says the rear, I don't know how you appeal that, right? Without a very unique set of circumstances that happened. Does that make sense to?
I think, yeah, I get all that. Again, maybe nobody's getting what I'm saying. I'm just saying, I mean, tell me if I'm saying something that's, I'm misunderstanding something. I'm just saying is, is if you recognize that there may be a limited circumstance like that Atlantic Bank, how to do it in a particularly, you know, attractive way. If we include that kind of design alternative in there and move them in that direction, rather than from walking away from our code and just going to Boza and just coming up with a completely different design than if you can convince a majority of members of the board. I mean, Paul might have gotten the designs passed Boza that didn't look half as good as that one. Because it really comes down to a majority vote, right? See what I'm saying? You always have the ability to go somewhere else and just design out however you want based on.
But here's where I disagree because they're not a design review appeal board. And this was the, it says rear and so the interpretation was rear. So it's hard to, that's a pretty clear, you know, kind of delineation.
I think we, we, and I don't, I think it'd be inappropriate for us to say, well, if you do it this way, you could do it this way. I, I don't think we should be designing anything for, uh, applicants coming forward. I think we leave it in the rear. If anything, we do a special exception where they could come before our board uh, and ask for a special.
Well, that's my, my point is I'd rather them come before our design review board than going before Boza. However you do that.
Not to you.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Special exception doesn't go to you.
Still goes to Boza. Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
They're pretty, usually pretty strict, but again, that was a very specific set.
Couldn't be adjusted so that a special exception in a given case can come to the planning commission.
I think, and I addressed this in some earlier meeting way back. I said, because of the way that our statute is so broad, I think the only way you do it is if, if you have a, a design alternative within our code, which means that it comes to us as opposed to calling in a special exception or a variance. We gotta call it out to something different.
If drive through the code comes to you for approval, so you have a lot of discretion. The problem is, is Boundary Street overlay district goes to staff. So all this stemmed from interpretations of staff that changed over three times, right? And so that was, that's, you only see this issue on Boundary Street, I think. So already you're going to.
Boundary and Robert Smalls coming out of this?
No, you're going to get everything accessible along the street and Boundary Street. I don't think there's going to be any drive throughs on Blade Street, but could be, I guess, but.
Yeah, I mean, when you say Boundary, this thing is actually on Robert Smalls' part, what we were talking.
Yeah, but it's the Boundary Street district goes to basically the end of his property. Yeah, and so I guess what I'm trying to say is the code in chapter nine already says a drive through facility. No matter what kind it is, comes to you. But you're already getting the discretionary approval of it. And if you want to, you know, work with them on design, I think you already have the power to do it without changing the code. What we're trying to do is provide different requirements that are better designed the drive through, should you go with the planning permission and give you more ability to kind of regulate that through discretionary power. So it's the Boundary Street. I think when you agreed to let it go before I wanted to be staff and that's where all the issues apply. But, but then staff would have to use this to approve the drive through. Boundary Street. Otherwise, everything else comes to you.
If they don't like that, which they know, then they think they'll go to the ZBIA.
They can appeal it to the ZBIA if it's, uh.
Hard trip.
If it's hard, if it's dimensional.
They always say it's hardship.
I would worry about that because.
My neighbor in jurisdictions don't allow drive throughs to the front, so I just don't.
I get it. I, 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 I'm not going to argue with it. I just, I just thought that he made a good case on that one thing.
No, it looks, that was a very special, unique case and I do a great job.
But we're trying to get that, buddy.
Yeah. No.
And even the next owner, you worry about what's going to, well, I guess that Mr. Tras can keep him on track, but you know.
It'll be a bank for a long, long, long time. Probably forever.
That's what they all say. Okay, where do we want to go from here?
I think it's up to me to, you want to keep on chapter four? Time in a break.
Well, I'd rather stay on chapter four and see if we can get through it, see if we can.
I think they're all related. That's, you know, we're at the fore and that could, that's the hard part to relieve us. There are some things that we really, you know, bring your, are your attention to this or you want to make sure we I'll give feedback on that.
I think, do you want to go back to the first page and just go through it like that? I, I think we just were trying to talk about major issues.
I have mostly work smithing kinds of things. I'm okay to go to these pages, I'm able to get through it that way.
Do you want to take a break or do I just ask?
Take a break?
Yeah.
You guys can go to the table for my chair.
I think we already talked about page one unless anybody else has something else. Chris, you're gonna do something about those word.
We we changed them already.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, we still need to change streets again.
Oh, yeah, that's fair.
It's obvious.
Stay in guard too. Or if you just take it out.
So far, just take now. Well. Do we really need that? I mean, it seems. Unnecessary.
I don't know that we need it. But we're not doing any of that. That's not.
Yeah.
It's nothing we can do. We cannot legislate. Okay, so page two, anybody?
A big change on page two is uh before there was this uh. Exemption for conventional districts.
Yeah.
And some of the. Some things were exempted and I thought that might not be appropriate, including making some changes, so. Design, sound, should say that. I mean, that's a little bit. It's kind of. But for a while.
I don't have a problem with your uh. B or B one. I don't have anything else on two if anybody else does. H three. B intent.
Under what section?
H three and G.
The.
Or three one.
Intent. I'm not sure uh. What you're talking about. When you use the word climate. I took climate out and just. Put in vernacular there.
Oh, I think it is really to. Because of the unique climate, it encourages certain design principles like for approaches and. Orientation streets because of, you know, the heat and humidity and so on. That's what's going on. That makes.
That's where you're going with that though?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm always not about, you know, like climate change. It was more about.
Right.
Yeah.
And breezes.
Yeah, yeah.
That it seems to come up a lot, I think, like the. Store district standards that's mentioned is. Informed way of built environment.
Do you have that in a definition then? Definition section five.
No.
I think we did, we we needed.
We define the word climate?
I don't know that I could.
In in the context where you.
Wait, which section are you under? I've not missed here.
B, C M H three.
Or.
Intent says design should reflect to the low country climate, landscape and cultural heritage promoting human scale pedestrian oriented development.
I got that for low countries.
Climate and weather.
Design should respond to all probably. Well. I think, I think, I think you know what climate, I don't know what's. You get cold in the winter and the summers are hot and you need to breathe. I I don't know. I guess I just. I don't know. Seen it so often, I guess. I think I just.
But I think the idea is.
Understand the idea.
Taking advantages of the. Place you are.
Porches are big.
Well, I just think. We don't have for definition. Should be easy. You got it. Kind of define it uh. When you get to uh. Subsection C of B. That's pretty much what you're talking about is climate. Go to C. I would just change the words around and say. Under findings, the architectural vernacular instead of vernacular architecture. Think that's more appropriate. Third line down. Adapted to the climate and. Shaped by local. I added in design and craftsmanship. Now, I put a period after that. And suggest that we take out. Rather than academic or formal architectural styles.
Yeah, but what does that mean?
I don't know what that really.
Yeah.
And then the next paragraph. First, I'm not sure if we need this next paragraph.
I was wondering about that too, so I'm just thinking about this in relationship to, say, we're talking about a garden, a comp. A complex, I just. I I don't know, I just.
I just don't know if we need that paragraph. I don't know if it's doing anything.
I don't think it does. It's more for historic, I think. I mean, there's parts of it that I think.
I mean, if we were gonna go as far. We're keep advocating about with multifamily limit the size, you know, the number of units per building. I mean, this could be a reason why to do it, but. If we're still gonna allow thirty six unit uh forage or whatever some of these are. It it's hard to see how that. Relates back.
Not like hurts anything. It's just so esoteric. It's just kind of. Well, I think that's all I have.
All the arts is being deleted and that's all that is. Creating.
A four.
That's one time.
I have under B. When you start out in a political relationship to the street. And then you go into. Rest of it seems like there should be a. Colon or a semicolon after that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think that's there. I'll just. It could be a separate subheading, really.
Like a C.
No, but it's part of the same thing, so uh. Yeah, I think just remove the relationship to the street.
My next thing is down on. D on that page, second uh. Second paragraph under the. It says uh. Employing simple, well-composed masses. Typically organized as one or more. And instead of vernacular or rectangular, I said complementary. Volumes. I don't know that they have to be necessarily rectangular. That's used in other places too. And uh sometimes it says square, which I've changed to rectangular, but. Uh, in in this case, I don't think it has to be rectangular. I just. I think complementary would be good enough. That allows some flexibility. And then continuing on, it says.
Which second, so there for the right thing.
On page four, the second paragraph.
First is right. It's language.
Rectangular to complementary.
You don't wanna say force that.
Pentagon. Out that birdhouse.
And then it continues on on that sentence that says excessive articulation or. Irregular forms, like I'm not sure what that means.
That that's all.
Okay.
You're right. I guess that's what it would be. I can see it in the context of you for myself, but.
I want to next page.
Okay.
Around our next page box.
Page five. Top of the page two. Second line, draw inspiration from historical. Vernacular. Warehouses. And I I entered local businesses.
That's very.
It's only it's two residential character. It's different on our, could it be different on our.
Last one under D.
Residential character.
Is that right? There it is. Commercial buildings shall resemble, that's not true, large draw inspiration. What did you want to change that to?
Oh, add.
I just wanted to add local businesses. I didn't want to leave it as warehouses.
Okay. Local. And so this comes up a lot in our, especially in historic history when people are trying.
I mean, how would a car play off my car wash? It's possibly. Yes, that's what I was saying. Warehouse. I I don't know, I mean.
Well, it's where where possible, I think. How about should resemble when possible.
Long to say. What you are like a. Apartment store, well, I guess I don't have those anymore, but. We're come back. We. Say yes, I'm an apartment store.
I don't think any of our, any of their commercial buildings, any of them resemble, have any residential character to them. Why even necessarily? On. Yeah. That's a lot there. It starts by residential character, then it says. They should look more like a warehouse or a.
Let's let's highlight it. How does highlight this? This came from Jeremy's side. I'll ask him what, I think I know where he's going with it, but. Let's 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 highlight it. I think he's trying to say, you know, like if you're building a new building, let's look at the existing buildings and take some historic form from them, so they're, you know.
Yeah, I that that's.
Even like if the the firehouse with the 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 uh. You know, the the new station, rebuild state, whatever it's called, you know, they took the the form of the firehouse. Brick. Arches.
Is that what I rebooted?
I think that's what he's trying to get.
The new one is is you getting closer to Port Royal?
Yes, I think that's what we're trying, he's trying to get at, but I don't think it's well stated, so let's think about.
I think you go too far. We get into warehouses, farms.
Maybe it was just tated sheds.
Yeah.
I always just leave where it's all.
Yeah, they did a nice job of that. Heart station. Good, clearly.
Um, the next one I have. Is under F. A. H five. Human scale prioritized vertical proportions so that architectural features appear taller than they are wide using historical proportions. That gets back to the like a Brusier. And. Da Vinci kind of proportionality. To humans.
Yeah, okay, so you wanna, let's go back to, they can change it, so taller than they are wide and then what did you say? I'm sorry.
No, what I, yeah, taller than they are wide using historical proportions. That goes back to. To Da Vinci.
Do you want to keep that second sentence? This reinforces. I mean, that explains, I guess, why.
Yeah, it it that explains.
Yeah, okay, so just add it one.
Yeah, just add that.
You know, I don't know. I've been looking for it. I thought in this code it referenced. There's a list of books. That um. You could use for guidance when you need it, you know, the head, the head center base or whatever, like Steve Musa, yeah, for Steve Musa.
Right.
Whatever.
I've got a list, there's about five or six.
Right, and I I don't know, I thought maybe. But maybe that was in the civic master plan, but I don't know if it's necessary.
That's probably.
Yeah, that helps explain why. I don't know. Where this is all coming from.
I'm done with five. If anybody else has anything on five. On six. Uh, top of the page, B. Raised foundations, both country building, group. Incorporate. Proportional raised foundation. Foundations. Uh, or water. Water lines to use later on in this thing. Again, the. Everybody knows what water lines are, right? In historical buildings, what all they do is they have. Their or whatever, plant of building is usually a different material like stone. And it goes up to what they call a water line, and uh, it doesn't have anything to do with flooding. But it's called a water line, and then they use different material going on.
Called water table.
Yeah, water table.
We're done with that, back up to A, we said, right, they have porches and arcades. But it seems like we've eliminated arcades.
You know what, we we uh, when we updated. Christopher, I was talking about, we put the arcade back, I think Jeremy's. Oh, unless there are are no arcades in different, so why would you like?
Well, there are at least two on Bladen.
Paul's got, you know, he's he's kind of great.
I think the arcade works, you know, it doesn't work everywhere, but it certainly works in that application.
Works if it's done right, the way Paul says, that other one is messed up, but.
Oh, the one that house? Yeah, that one is.
Well, that wasn't. Didn't follow the rules. Um, and Port Royal has. Quite a few examples, I mean, they're not historic, I don't think, but it's using arcades, so.
Hey, use the word water table instead of water line.
Well, we're trying to basically uh. Reduce the scale for commercial buildings here.
Although we just talked about Mount Pleasant in that example, you know, in Calgary, that we wanna. Keep them up a little bit, I guess, and we talked about the height of those, that they could kinda.
I mean, it says, but it also says paragated roofs may be appropriate on some construction structure, so it's giving you some.
Also, is this just mainly for commercial or?
No, it's for everything, I mean, I think the goal again is to.
Because I think the idea of, you know, reducing the amount of. Concept that's not really much to make, I guess, you know, we insulate the attic now and um. The kind of. Seems kind of outdated. Aren't they also good in this climate of hurricanes, just. There's. The whole wall pitch is. Safer, isn't it? I mean, that that suppose. Less wind resistance.
Yeah, I mean.
And and residential. I think if you got it engineered, I think. Well, yeah. Difference, but um. I guess, like, I guess I don't know exactly what. The low pitch roof means, is that like? With nine twelve?
No, they they define it as two twelve.
Or maybe we need to highlight this, and let's just talk, should we define? Should we define what the pitch should be, but uh, let's maybe remove the heat trap.
I guess I would hate to live in homes to low pitch roofs, especially if we're trying to do, like, if you wanna do dormers. Can't be, we can't do dormers anywhere.
Yeah, I think this is a good point.
Yeah, I think it's a little much for outside this work history.
Maybe. Um, uh, let's just highlight it and let's uh. You got rid of the portions that I don't think worked.
On the section on materials, we need to have the. Four point six point three. That talks about existing, it's about. Like we need one or the other kind of thing.
Yeah, I think so.
So you just wanna wait to look at this until you blend them to what you want, I mean?
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean.
I think I gotta figure out how, because these were the kind of uh. Yeah. Guidelines and materials, maybe we we uh. We get rid of the material section, just blend them.
So take this material section and actually incorporate.
Well, no, I like it here. But. At the same time, that's, this is a guideline, it's not, I don't, let's see, that's the challenge here, it's the guideline. Require us with four point six three, it's like.
Four days, these are the things we want and. That's all. When they're guidelines, it's like, well, maybe, yes, and if you make it, I I don't know, so.
Yeah, cuz this talks about, you know, on the roof theme, you just mentioned standing seam here, but I mean. Then it's five B O K, and then if you go to this and other chapter, then it's okay, you know. And that always says painted steel or galvalume, but, you know, aluminum is kind of the way to go. And. You know, saltwater environment, so.
Would you say it is, I didn't hear?
Is the way, you know, is the more durable. Yeah, saltwater, it's aluminum.
Then then not.
Then uh, then galvalume or steel, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, well, um. I'm sorry, we'll just highlight this, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, you know. I mean, I think it's. Everybody likes it, it's just how we connect it.
Doesn't seem like we need two. Four pages, materials.
Yeah, I I don't like that we are specifying colors to that definitive of a degree.
Yeah, so Anna Gray or Charles Gray.
Well, this is for brick, uh, that's for brick.
Yeah, but even even that, we have fine red brick. And brown brick.
Yeah, people paint sometimes white.
I mean, what is your all thought, do you? You know, the code right now is prescriptive, and it gives you a lot of materials, this is more than, this is more supposed to be a guideline. So. It's just kind of like a recommendation, whereas the material, you know, how, I mean, I'm still, I'm. Think, think we're, I'm thinking about it at the same time, I'm just trying to figure out how to be, this is kind of the recommendation.
Well, as long as we have the word of like, should and stuff, which are unusual to call, I mean, usually they're, they are prescribed, but. As long as we have them, and again, I go back to what I said at the beginning, the layer today is, when they come before the design review board, if we don't start. Substituting our individual. Preferences on every person's design and saying, well. You know, I really think you should do it in Savannah gray, you know, we're not gonna approve it, I just. It it's gonna be become possible for people to get their projects approved.
I I think we can.
I but giving them guidance and saying, this is where we'd like you to start, and then letting them come and make the case for brown brick or something, that doesn't bother me. As long as we don't say that you have to, I mean. You didn't wanna take those references out.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna. Quite frankly, I don't. Appreciate. Great brick. Most of our buildings are some kind of a red brick. There's variations all over the place, red. So I I I think you have to include standard uh, red slide. But you you don't want them to come out.
I'll just stop, Rob, because I remember when code was getting towards completion, the current code, there had been a lot of. Shoulds in here, and then I think it was the developer subgroup, when they reviewed it. And, you know, attorney involved, and they said, no, we want all the shoulds chained to shell, cuz we wanna know. We don't wanna come back and. One person says, I love the gray, the other board member, hey, the gray, we need.
Well, here's what I'm saying, I know, I've I've made the. I've made a critical argument these things, and I used to always say, code should all be definite, no gray areas whatsoever. But then then what ended up happening, a lot of these codes ended up getting design review overlay districts, overlay district, and then I started dealing with all of those, and I'm like. Well, what's the difference? I mean, we got some areas where we got all these, all this discretion, and then we got all the other areas where it's all. Has to be a certain way. And I think that. Where I've kind of come downtown down on it, and I've looked at this from a standpoint where case law and stuff says that, I don't think there's a problem with having legally. Having. The guidance that isn't specific, you know. That says it, you know, we ought to consider this itself. And then it just comes down to though, the the deciding body exercising some discipline so that we don't sit around. Nitpicking these guys to death and and turning these shoulds into shells, see what I'm saying?
Right.
Because we have to exercise the discipline. And if we end up looking at all these shoulds and shells, then that's a problem, because the guy goes, well, it said should. I don't design this whole thing based on what I ought to do, but I don't have to do, and now you're saying that I really mean shell. See what I'm saying? And so I think that's just how we, if it says should. Or oughta. You know, shoulda, coulda, woulda, then we ought to respect the fact that it gives these people enough flexibility to not.
We're we're not here to decide on a building.
In the current code, it just said building anyway, it just says a lot of materials, brick. Next sentence.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't help you much at all either, yeah.
But. There's all different kinds of brick, and you come in with brick, and you're good to go, so I'm just.
That's right.
Saying, previously, there was a desire for shells so that they knew.
I don't mind going away from it, and that's, that's what I'm saying, is that's opposite of what I argue for most of my life, but then I'm not playing the same role anymore. I don't, I don't represent builders, I just think of what they're going through.
I just don't, I don't. You know, a lot of people get bogged down as.
So just go back to what Mike was saying, because you but you wanna take out some colors, but you also wanna. Are you saying, might get rid of the references to building materials, fiber cement siding and all that, or are you just saying?
No, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. In fact, I went down, I said, like, when you go down to stucco. Um, I added at the end of that, it said historic character, but must be properly articulated. So. You don't just get a blank wall of. Stucco. And just as a side note. Architectural, as architect, I've always been under the assumption that a building should uh, have no more than three different. Uh, materials in its elevations.
For that's.
Uh, I don't know. That is appropriate to add. To that top paragraph under materials or not.
I think it's on this, that's uh, four point six chapter.
Oh, does it? Oh, really?
Building must probably finish in one or more, but not more than three.
There you go, okay. Well, that's kind of.
Yeah, that's in the current. But again, currently, it exempted like two, three, 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 so. Some of the home, production home builders.
And yeah, let me, we'll have to think about how we're gonna combine this, if we can combine the raw materials with the guidelines or. Keep separate like this.
Foundation piers, brick is an ideal material for raised foundation piers of low country, commercial buildings. Uh, I think it's the case for residential too, but. Not a hundred percent sure. What that's trying to suggest.
Well, what? What it has to be is brick on masonry. You can't have a brick period.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not very stable, yeah.
So it has to be brick on masonry.
Some of these old houses, you do have brick, just brick and then.
I had to reinforce all that on mine. So, foundation piers, brick on masonry is. And when we get to uh. The standing seam material.
Yeah.
Then. Don't worry about this, but um. You uh. You need to have either a single or double lap. On the, on the uh, seam. It has to have, your seams have to be either single or double lap. The seams that have the panels come up and do this. And then they just put a cleat over the top of it. That's the cheapest you can do, and it's the worst that you can do, cuz then you're gonna get moisture infiltration into the system. You need to have a. A lap. Which is either a single lap. Or it can be a double lap.
Hey, you can still use the snap lock, if I understand. But once they're um, snapped, you know, they're pre-hypertated, they just, they just snap on a side.
And locks, yeah, it's still locked, yeah.
Instead of running a machine that.
Yeah, I've done so many, I've done so many lawsuits on the post with uh. Bad standing seam.
I I only just take. That materials options out. Okay. Is. And you can list, list all. I mean, there's still some, you know, copper, zinc can look even better, so.
And I've asked, added with that, a long-term permanent color finish. Also had a lot of lawsuits I had to deal with where the. The finish wasn't passed in the solid air.
Mike, would you like to repeat that?
With the finish on the, on the standing seam.
Yeah, I just said, uh, with a long-term or permanent colored finish. I didn't wanna define it because the technology is always changing. But the bad, the old technology is not good. And then, under roofing, uh, on the first thing, where it says. Serving to the fertile part of the, number one, serving to reflect sunlight and manage heat. Material. I think. Insert should. Or should have options.
I think we just.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's.
Looks like a board and bathroom hardy plank on the walls, you mean?
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
That's what it looks like.
Under two architectural shingles. Says high quality. Fiberglass. In other parts, you you specify it as minimum twenty-five year. Uh, architectural shingles. So I don't know if you want to substitute that for the high quality. And be used, uh, and then it goes on to specify the color. Black or dark brown. Which are the worst. Colors to have for attracting heat.
Yeah, why does it say typically required to be dark gray or black when?
Um, I would just take that out.
Yeah.
I know that. Yeah, the historic.
They don't like what, they don't, they don't like white color machines.
Right, but this is general material.
They can do that, anything can, right, yeah.
Yeah, you don't wanna do that for. For normal residential or. That's all I have on page six. Anybody else have anything? On page seven. Up at the top, under glazing, number two.
Yeah.
It says, uh, glass could be clear and non-reflective. I don't know how that relates to percent UV. Because when you have UV glasses, it's gonna be sensitive.
Where do you see, okay, I see.
And then we get, we had this, this, this uh. This clear glazing thing that comes up so often.
Oh, it'll be, it'll come up later on here.
So. Cuz cuz we wanted to be a little more flexible with that, and we decided it's circumstances, didn't we?
Well, yeah.
Or is it, oh, what's, but it's here, it comes up, cuz here it says it should be clear.
Down the, further down, then we're allowing span across.
Oh, so we are, so we say it should be.
Sections, but this is general.
Okay, okay, yeah. Currently.
Yeah, maybe we need to think about.
It says prohibited currently mirrored glass with reflectivity of twenty percent or more.
Where are you now?
This is in the current code, four point six point three, so it says that's, that's the limit, I guess, so.
But I think we've got to, uh, under the glazing, we've got to allow for UV. Uh, projection on our glazing. So that might be something that you research, see, I, I don't think there's a. I don't think you can get a high, high enough UV to. You know, negate using it.
Maybe it's just the way we're writing it.
At Harper Frey, um, one seventy. Wrong with the wind, I mean. How do they fit in, how does that fit into this glazing and reflectivity?
Does.
I just.
But everything in there is from China, so.
Most things everywhere.
So that's not gonna happen again, I guess, is what we're saying.
Sorry.
Well, around that windows and doors.
Yeah.
The frame materials, so say. Wood, aluminum, pad, fiberglass. Light comes on every now and then, and I'm not sure we're prohibiting that.
I think it's a recommendation.
Well, are, are we eliminating steel? That's a good point.
Well. Well, when it says are appropriate, that almost sounds like it's more than a recommendation. You say the others aren't.
Acceptable.
So, uh, how, what are most of the doors on most of the, you know, track residential houses?
Um, fiberglass.
Fiberglass pad or vinyl pad.
And you have the law of vinyl, right?
Yeah, we do like when Anderson Crawford serves the vinyl.
Yes. So.
But we mean one. Yeah, the next step, the next step up is the fiberglass.
Right.
Maybe it's just unnecessary, too much.
So. I think you have to say, if you're gonna, if you, you should say that vinyl is appropriate on. Windows and doors too.
Well, then, then it's just, it's just too, too historic.
Are you gonna just take the materials out altogether, they're actually what you're saying, or?
Maybe we just get rid of the frame material altogether. Just get rid of the frame material altogether. Because it's more historic, hey, it's more of a story than that. And who's gonna know if it's gonna vinyl frame from like a hundred feet away.
Next thing under that is columns. Wood fiberglass or composite columns are appropriate. They said should, I would change that to the shall be sized proportionately to the building.
Currently, it says that cast iron is also allowed, I don't know.
They can cast iron. In other parts. Of this code, we do allow stone. I don't see a problem with having stone in here. So, under detailing. Uh, your second line, predominantly wood and. Wood, brick and stone. No, no, that's not blue. That's the next sentence.
I'm sorry, I was on the next sentence.
Sorry.
I've never seen.
Yeah, and stone can over rub it out of place here, because it's really.
But we have stone buildings, historical buildings are stone. One right next to the, uh, Prince of Tides House. Second one, second one from the corner was imported. France. And there's another one there on the main park in the point.
Round building, stone?
It has the slave quarters behind it, those big columns.
Look at that, look at that, look at the one that's like.
That one.
That's concrete, I think, that's.
What is it, that's a mess building?
Concrete.
That's a cast stone.
It looks like concrete block, but it's actually stone, you think?
Yeah, it's stone.
But I guess what, um, we don't want is go back to the street.
It was a flop house.
Uh, go back five years. To boundary.
They did a nice job.
I, I looked at buying. Uh, some friends of mine bought it.
Oh, okay.
Uh, what is that, Red Roster Cafe, could it be that?
That's what, that's stone that we probably want to avoid.
Which one?
River Rock.
Oh, that kinda thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see, I agree with you on that, that's not for here.
Seems like every building.
That was Red Lobster, that was supposed to be Maine, and what was the other one?
Italy, Italy and Maine all in one.
Yeah, but it just feels, yeah, out of place. I do like it though.
And there, there is a, a line of gas stations that does this stone. But associated with.
But do we wanna eliminate it from the community? You don't like that stone, but.
So it's a design recommendation, I think that's the difference, this is the recommendation of Heather's material. We can definitely beat him over the head and say it shouldn't be using this stuff.
But that's some of the, this gas station chain I'm thinking of, which I can't come up with a name, like I say, well, that's what we do. We have to do it, that's our brand, it's.
Oh, we've already covered it here, we've already, can't do that either.
We don't say, um, cast, cast stone with smooth finish.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know.
It's actually on this materials list, it's this cast stone.
Cause if you don't, you're not specific, you're gonna get.
They're gonna check this roadhouse here, yeah, do we? What are you gonna say, huh? What are you gonna say?
Yeah, we have roadhouse.
Roadhouse, I mean, they're all barn wood and.
Hey, I'm on page eight. Under architectural compatibility, A. Wonder if we have to say gasoline pump canopies or just. Take out gasoline pump and just.
That section.
Eight.
Eight, what, what?
P eight.
Well, it's because it happens so often, they don't like that. Because it comes up so often, it's so. You know.
Oh, it is.
Want to not do. Similar material.
Well, I would say we leave canopies, I don't just know, you had to make it specific to gas pumps.
Gas canopies already are not allowed to have signage on them. It's already the current restriction.
Is this because it comes up?
Next thing I have is under, uh. Q. Local design quality, if you go down one, two, three, four, five lines. It starts out, however, the planning commission or staff may work with applicants to incorporate limits. Signature design, you know. I think that whole sentence could be struck, because it's. Repeated from, I think, the page or two before. Yeah, I think it's a repeat. You could look at that.
Well, let's look, yeah, cause it, this.
I couldn't find it again, but I, I read it once, then when I read this and William, I just read that.
Well, just, just.
See if you can find that.
But this was, you know.
So when it says the prototype architecture is prohibited. So for, just by way of example, I mean, I think the new colvers look perfectly nice there, but that's their prototype everything, isn't it?
Sort of, I mean, that's.
Others smarter, still like projects.
And Wendy's is pretty good too, for sure. It's like exactly, the Wendy's. Ladies Island didn't know what it's about, three.
Yeah, yeah, they're pretty protect, so I say, protect architecture prohibited, then it goes on, however, the client wish or step may. May work with the applicants to incorporate limited signature design.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with.
Totally agree with what?
Not allowing the prototype architecture, I mean.
I mean, my point is.
And, and other communities, so, so. Do architectures.
I just mean, I don't think that there's anything wrong with that, at all with the. With the colvers, and you wouldn't have got one if you told them they couldn't have their blue and white, I mean, that's just signature. Hundred percent around the country. And now they may not have, you always have, um, I think they've got, um, flat siding on there, don't they? Which was what you want here, so maybe they. Maybe, maybe they don't do that all the time.
And they have false advertising on the side, they call it false. Frozen custard, I ordered frozen custard, I got a scoop of ice cream.
I really like the colvers.
You got two Wisconsin nights.
When we travel, we always go over the col, that was.
It is, I mean, that's frozen custard right there.
Ice cream.
Yeah.
We haven't been there both, they're good. Right, so the, do you guys wanna strike this language altogether with the prototype architecture?
No, no.
I don't.
He just thought it was repeated.
All it does is make them come to you and say, well, can we do this, that or the other thing? I think that's fine. Cause they'll, they'll change your architecture depending on.
Well, to an extent, they're not gonna change their colors, but.
No, not necessarily.
They want to change their colors, but they might change their.
So I'm on page nine. And I have a question, because this will come up a couple of times. Uh, if you go to the porch on B. Said porches may be constructed in front of the minimum required setback. We want to allow.
That is right away, it's just.
Porches and stuff. Constructed into the. The setback.
I think it's in line too with the encroachment section, it specifically permits porches to encroach. Within the, uh, the setback.
How, how, this is our limit?
I think it's seven feet or like up to five feet.
Two feet, I think, doesn't it? I just. I just, I just don't wanna see us allowing stuff like what Port Royal has, called down Barrett's Avenue. They got. They got the curved sidewalk and the porch. Pretty much coming to the curb almost. Take a look at any of those new buildings they have.
Well, I think if you need to look at what the setbacks or the build to line is, I think hopefully they should be. Coordinated and G three S is.
Yeah.
A setback, so there's no. There's an issue in G three, G four.
You mean if he three S, that you, if you have your setback line of twenty feet, you can still come in seven feet from that toward the street. Or the red ones, yeah.
We essentially measure, when, when I'm looking at house reviews, at least, we don't consider the porch. As the front facade, because they're the actual building.
Okay, yes.
And porches are, which they don't usually, I'm trying to remember, but they don't typically. Design what's coming in the setbacks regardless.
Right, I think that's another thing. Encourage people to have a porch.
All right, and you're okay with leaving the arcade? And we'll work on the floorboard. We'll leave the arcade, and then we added, uh. Church and institutional, I think, it's a building title, but I guess.
Better play the real home with the town hall.
Let's go back to the, uh, gallery colonnade on page eleven. And it says, uh. May overlap sidewalk to within two feet of the curb. That's what I'm, was talking about with Port Royal. We wanna. That's really crowded in the street.
Well, you need to maintain that, um. You need to maintain a clear ten foot width under that gallery or colonnade. So.
But that doesn't, doesn't change the fact that it's so close to the curb, so it sounds like, like, like.
Then why wouldn't we allow an arcade if we didn't allow a. There are same differences, the arcade has that habitable space above it.
Oh, is that, so is that the place that's open? Down a block from Paul, where it's, we got the residential space above.
Right.
And, and that, was that legal or was that?
I don't know, it's illegal, that shouldn't have been done. What they should have done was insect steps, the way they, they did it, Naomi's.
Yeah.
Instead, they had them project out into the sidewalk.
What was the, what is the? There's living spaces above the projection.
Yes.
That was, that part was legal?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just that there's not enough clear space under the arcade, so.
Be, because of the steps, I got it, okay.
Not eighty, it's just not right, but, I mean, when it's done right, the weight causes.
Yeah, but, so then, that, that's the one right there, so that, the problem was those steps.
Right.
I got it.
Otherwise, it's really, it's fine.
But you can just tell that it's too smushed in the front, you can tell it's not deep enough.
Yeah, their sidewalk probably isn't quite deep enough.
Well, I mean, they didn't leave enough.
And the columns are a little bit oversized, I think, too.
But the steps, they ended up taking this, they ended up making the sidewalk a private space there, because I. Can't get through there if you got a baby carriage or something, right?
So they had to take out the trees that were in front of there. The public trees.
Oh.
I think they were palmettos, but they were still.
Sorry, does this whole thing need to have a little more study to it?
Well, that's not right, I mean, that's not how you would do it, according to the book, but that's. A general idea, I guess, you might say.
I'm just wondering if you, maybe Chris or somebody could do a little. Research and study this.
Your concern is that, uh.
I don't wanna crowd the street.
Go back to the.
If you can highlight, let's highlight this.
Go back to the. Just cause that's really that right.
We'll come back with.
Yeah.
The arcade.
Oh, right, the arcade.
I was just coming up a block closer to, to Bay, where all of Naomi.
Yeah, that arcade, it says it needs to be twelve feet wide, I know, so they.
There, that's the, that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
Right, and then the stairs were inserted, so they didn't come out into the sidewalk.
And I think now they're.
But what we're saying is those columns could come out within two feet of the curb, which is taking.
So, yeah, then you would lose, then you would lose the trees and stuff, right?
Yeah.
So that one, that one, but that one.
Maybe it should be fourteen.
Yeah, maybe lead four.
Four or five feet, because eighty is like four and a half feet.
Right, but if you're, the tramway is twelve feet, I think now, it's not currently for the, um. Well, currently, I'm sure the gallery, it says ten feet. And I thought for the arcade, it was twelve, so if you leave that space. That's fine, and so you really don't want, you wouldn't necessarily need that extra space at. That's fine, and so you really don't want, you wouldn't necessarily need that extra space at the curb, and what are you gonna do as curb, you're gonna walk. Under this arcade or gallery, that's the walking space.
Well, okay, but. Two feet, your car overhang for the bumper from the wheel is probably a foot and a half to two feet, so.
Well, you'd have parallel parking, you wouldn't have head in parking.
Well, you can't say that.
Get open your car door.
You can't say that.
Well, I don't. Wouldn't have ninety degree uh.
No, no, you're not gonna, we don't have those.
I ju- I just would feel better if we did a little research.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
We'll we'll highlight and come back with some.
And you highlight the arcade, the twelve.
Yeah, it's not, I'm just suggesting, don't use what you see on blade, and that is the example of what.
No, no, but I'm saying it, maybe in parallel could be.
So is that line, the property line, so it's going past. This line, right?
Right.
Okay.
I've got nothing on. Twelve or thirteen. Unless anybody else does. And on fourteen, if I go to. Four, five, one, general. Under C. Um. Structure, someone sign. Reasons for advertising for. Identical for.
I think that's the repeat of your.
I think it's, yeah, I think it is. Uh. And I just had an indicator there, it says C section, uh, X. Whatever. If if he, if they would need to just relate to each other. I just would refer back to the section that already has.
I feel bad, but. For rural. Home townhouse, maybe change it, I don't know, just to row house slash townhouse. I just thought somebody.
Rural home?
Yeah, I don't know, somehow the term.
There are a few people with the uh, project next to the hospital, but some people.
Yeah. I don't know, I think home implies something and houses for generic or that that's something else.
Well.
So just call.
It'll probably be, well, if we do, then we'll have to switch the whole code. Because it'll be rural. Then it's just nice for that, that's all, if that's a. It's a. Other sections.
Don't have anything else on fourteen or fifteen.
So we have a. Probably.
There's some, yeah, I think that's a yes to.
What you saying?
Yeah, that, I don't know, currently they're trying to change row home to row house, it's more generic or something.
Oh, that's.
Forget I said that.
I was only making my comment because it was just. We'll miss it some because it's in, the whole code is rural home.
I got it.
Whatever.
One point five credits for watching that. Where we are, so. Yeah, let's see your friends. Listen to the house. Eat slash. Suffer for one point five credit, then you can.
Page sixteen. This is convincing.
All right.
Um. Under the bottom of page B two, historic. District in the historic district.
Oh, we took, we took that out. We did that. We made an elevation, our construction.
All right, that's it. I don't have anything else there on page seventeen.
There's fourteen.
Well, I think we're gonna. Look at this again, and I think we'll be brought up the uh, landscaping, if we wanna do landscape. Landscaping.
No, no, I mean, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just. Arguing that, I'm just pointing out, because somebody's gonna point out. It's gonna add time and money and staff and time, and they're gonna need another person, I I don't know, it's just.
Well, the good news with the track built homes is we really hardly have any land left to turn into another track built subdivision, so. As part of the.
Well, annexation is a possibility, so never say never, that's true.
But it was really a, say, um. A response to the last fixed.
Well, no, that's been information, I didn't realize that, so no, I.
Many deficiencies.
Okay, page seventeen. Seven garages.
Um.
Garage doors shall not. Stand across over the thirty percent. Of the street facing. The facade. I I just have a question mark, is that?
Yeah, I'm not so, so a a a double garage is gonna be minimum of twenty. Two, twenty-four feet, right? And. I don't know that you can do thirteen percent of.
Thirty.
Or thirty percent, I mean, that's. You're gonna have one car garages, nobody's gonna go for those.
That's the point.
I mean, I think the important point about these garages is. Is they should be recessed from, I mean, I have, I do not like, unless it's a side entry, you know, sort of a. Uh, where you come in and you make the turn, then I don't mind the garage sticking out. Well beyond the facade of the house, otherwise, if it's a front.
That's a side load.
If it's a, yeah, side loaded, but if it's a front loaded, that I think more important than the width is to have the garage setback from the house.
I guess I'm just saying we don't wanna, you don't have to build like a rear.
What if you say lots?
Yeah. Trying to get away, I've done, it was intentional to get away from. Where I was just making out.
Yeah, but in the in the T three, that's what they're gonna be.
Well, this was intentionally to try to get away from that.
I just think the idea of doing alley loaded, you're not gonna have Haber Shams and New Points everywhere, you're gonna have more of the subdivisions like, what is the one, Salem Bay? And I don't know how many of those have the garages that protrude from the front of the house. I can't recall, maybe all.
Yeah.
This is specifically written also to prevent that from.
Which part of that?
Whole thing was.
Well, they got a variance for that, because.
That goes again to that whole variance, it drives me crazy, like, you write a code that they can get a variance for every garage you protrude.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if they specifically.
It's on the driveway width, I found, for that, but the other was a.
Yeah, I I think the interpretation was that they considered the porch. As the front facade, so the porch is like maybe six feet in front of the garage doors, but the garage doors itself is in front of the actual house facade. I think that was kind of their.
And the other thing that's important is you have to have a a driveway of a of a enough depth. That a truck isn't gonna hang over, the F one fifty's aren't gonna hang over the sidewalk. Cause people, what they do in those, I I mean, this is what happens in the smaller houses, they buy a two car garage, they fill it with their junk, and then nobody parks in their garage. I used to write these CCRs, which required people to park their vehicles in their garages. Because that, and that's the way that a lot of these builders wanted to do it, so you couldn't have, when you drive down the street, everybody.
Yeah.
You could have gas parked overnight, but the but the primary vehicles had to be parked overnight in the garages. But a lot of these guys, they're not writing their CC, you can't rely on them to police their own communities.
I guarantee. Del Webb makes it to everybody. Park in the garage, they get tickets.
Well, maybe Del Webb does, but they don't, you don't, you don't, but there's D R Horton, that there's.
I know.
I guess that's. There it is. I guess that's the question, do you want to? The. There you go.
Let's see, this is probably a earlier picture.
Because I was basically trying to prevent.
Now, those are. So there I see what you said, it says, so they're they're not protruding. Past the the portico or the porch or something.
Right.
So I've I've, those aren't bad, I mean, I've seen some where all you get a feel for is a garage and you have like a.
That's called a snout house.
Snout house, yeah, yeah. And those aren't that.
People don't like those again.
Those are, those are.
You know, if you're not sitting there now that with the build, you know, the buildings are occupied, it's just a sea of. Park of vehicles parked along there.
That's not the way it looks today, if you go down at five o'clock at night or six, you'll just see vehicles, vehicles.
Yeah, it's blocking the sidewalk and um.
You can see like, you see a tree right next to your box, it's just gonna grow.
Yeah, there. One thing you might.
They should add sidewalks on most sides of the street.
You might consider they make garage doors now that are. That look almost like the facade of the house. Well, that's the. So it doesn't appear to be just a a garage door, it almost actually can look like blended right in.
Well, and they don't, I remember going through that whole thing with builders, cause for a while in Little, they wanted to get rid of front entry garages. And it's, it's. It's, when you have the six thousand square foot lots and so forth, you just can't have rear entry. But I just went through the the garage door catalogs one day with the builders, and I said, look at, there are so many attractive garage doors, they don't all have to be white, they got windows, they got architectural features. And maybe we should put something in here that just focuses on the fact, cause it doesn't cost more to get an architectural garage door.
Probably costs a little bit more, but not prohibitively so.
Not prohibitively.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at that, I mean, if you don't like a thirty percent, I'm basically trying to limit it.
Because these are all just, all one hundred percent, just buying old garage doors with no architectural features.
That's what they're gonna do.
But if you put some windows, some.
They're allowed to.
Yeah, they're allowed, maybe the top builder is gonna build the cheapest top, you know, it's, they they will, so we would just have, we would say the garage doors have to have some.
I mean, I think. Architectural all of it. Even make an exception, maybe like if the front comes out more, like almost where those trees are, you know, if you're looking down the street, all those garage doors would be hidden up until you're right in front of it.
Well, let's, let's maybe. Yellow it, highlight it, and we'll think about it, but you know, it sounds like are there.
Do something, we put something in there to highlight where we we look at the requirement architectural, it's garage doors, and maybe considering something like Benji just said about bringing out the. Or porch or something.
Right, or that would be meaning receding the garage.
So. A cheaper put in the architectural garage.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Um.
We'll work on that.
I did specify, by the way, just to mention it, under. The front yard, the landscaping requirements, that vegetation species that are used for ground cover, grass, the shrubs, trees. Should be native South Carolinian. Species that we use here, also maybe we've seen that too a lot is the um. The usage of maybe less water intensive landscaping to kind of discourage also like the expansive, like sodding, grass sodding, because. A lot of times you don't have the irrigation systems and. To actually, you know, have it irrigated, and we. I mean, it's, you know, it's up, it's very irregular, our rainfall events, and if you don't have, you know, constant irrigation, your grass is gonna look terrible. You know, so maybe go towards more a drought tolerant landscaping, oil maintenance uh. Uh, scheme rather than the the traditional. Sodding.
That sewer is three times water.
If that's fine, so.
Plus, why? I use eighteen dollars worth of water on one of my properties. And my bill was, what, seventy-seven dollars? Cause of the base charge. In the sewer. Uh. Eight.
I just see the front line, the landscaping, do we have anything about number of trees in front yards or anything?
Yeah, these front yards shall have at least one or more trees, front yard tree shall be of at least one and a half. Inch caliber inside.
You know, trees don't cost all that much. Well.
Yeah, I mean, if you start to get, you know. More than you need.
So here is it a representation or required?
It's just one tree. I'm just throwing it out, I'm just saying, I've all, I think, I've represented all these bullies and stuff, and they, I I know what they do, and I get it, they try to maximize the 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 square footage. In the house. House for people, I understand, cause big families and so forth, but they do almost nothing with the exteriors. And then you end up having these soulless kind of communities oftentimes, you'll have a. You know, the backyard will be on a slanted lot going into a drainage ditch, and you got a. Patio that isn't big enough for two chairs on it, and and then people have all their money into this thing, and they can't afford to go back in there and put in a decent slab of concrete. Or a second tree in the front yard, and I'm just saying, if you record with two trees in the front yard, look how much different the streetscape would look over time, if you just required two trees in each front yard.
Well, the problem is, is the lot might not be big enough.
Well, look at those pictures, those lots are big enough.
Well, you need twenty foot of separation at least for a decent sized tree.
Well, we're talking about this, we're talking the, the the smallest of these lots are are probably sixty foot wide, there might be some fifties.
Well, T three S though, that's right over one sixty foot.
I bet those are all, those all look to me.
They all have the twenty foot or twenty-two foot driveway, so you take that out, and then you're down to like, and then you got your utility to your.
Just go back. Utilities are federal.
Yeah, but you got a ten foot usually utility.
They got a tree, they got a tree there.
They put a tree right next to the driveway right next to it. That which has caused a lot of problems, that's why we're trying to write, let's not do that again.
Well, you're never gonna get as much of a streetscape. With that. Okay, I'm just saying.
Were they, I mean, generally was the side clear cut, I mean, I see some trees that. I mean, it seems that when that is permitted, then it needs, they need to go back with. Maybe the T trees.
Yeah.
And that was the Bostick Fields, though, that wasn't, it didn't have any.
You you cannot do a, I mean, when you say, and I say you can't.
Well, let's, let's think about that, and maybe we can do like a just three. Yeah, we'll.
It's two ten dollar trees.
One thing, I just kinda wanna throw out there too, is that with the changes to chapter five. Where we made it canopy standards. And we explicitly. Um, exempted single family houses from having any canopy requirement. So I don't know. If that's a conflict there or.
That's a good point, can you write that down, let's highlight that.
I can, no.
What about a larger, um, a little bit larger tree? On the county, it's anyway, for for replacement, it's two and a half inch count.
Okay, yeah.
And those are valued, I think, at two hundred twenty-five dollars. I I don't know.
Yeah, well, you know.
Get a better, at start.
Now, this is, I brought this up before, so maybe because we exempted the canopy from single family, maybe we could put it back into here, do something.
The other part that happens is they put in the old trees, that the homeowner never waters it, and over time you end up finding that what you thought was gonna be. You know, one house, one tree per house, you end up having like one thirty-five house.
Change that.
Maybe don't just don't put them back in.
Two and, two and a half.
Now we have a two and a half.
Ornamental trees somewhere.
Up to at least one.
What happens with like, still literally just have a guy, we'll have a few guys on the truck, and I'll just buy a bunch of cheap, cheapest trees, and I'll just install them.
Yeah.
I know literally that, you know, that you're like one tree or two trees, those are just throw them in, and that's what happened, it sounds good, it's a. Whatever health, whatever. However, start cheap.
Okay.
Again, those are. It's important to make sure you have the the the. The entry level communities look as decent as you can without removing affordability, because people have to live there after they, I mean, outside as well as inside their house.
Stay on page seventeen, eight. Go down to I I I. Just a suggestion, you've got gravel, cobbles. Rocks or other. I just thought maybe you might wanna change rocks to stone. Not sure what a rock is.
Okay.
Uh, I don't have anything on eighteen.
What's that? The unit house.
Where did you see it?
That five, page eighteen.
Two to three unit.
Oh, it says two to three unit, I didn't get it, except in the code.
I mean, we could just rename it duplex. A triplex.
I got it, I got it. That's fine, I didn't, I didn't.
Row house, townhouse.
Do you have any questions about the two and three unit houses?
Um, yeah, I did, well, this, or maybe they'll say that, say that when we talk about the use table.
Oh. It's up to you.
Well, in the use table, chapter two, current is added. Allowing two and three unit. House. And T three S is a conditional use. And so that would bring it to this.
Then you need to switch the two again.
And so what I was suggesting. This, I thought it was really. Good, that we're suggesting to up. That we're suggesting to up. That's maybe if that's the right term, in T three S, just a little bit, that the conditions though would be what's in B three. So you can't do the two and three unit everywhere in T three S, but you can do them on a corner lot or. Where air access provided, however, nor the, so it's introducing this new through. But in T three N, now we're gonna bump that up a little bit, and so we won't. Eliminate those conditions in T three N, so if you wanna do. Three duplexes or two complexes, two unit structures in a row, go for it. I mean, you got a parking ride and, you know, everything else, but. So we're doing what's being encouraged to be done around the country and taking our. Current districts and upping the ante, just tweaking it just a little bit, moving it up the next increment and.
Well, this one's a T two S.
Yes, exactly, yeah, yeah.
You probably should start uh, ending it.
We'd be thinking about, you know, with the uh, STR separation. Uh, should we be thinking about a separation for? These since we're putting them into residential areas so that you don't have a cluster.
Well, and that's the condition is they're only on a corner lot, or where all the access provided, no more than two per block, so there's always.
Right, this would be, but I was suggesting in T three M, let's go ahead and eliminate those conditions, so if you wanna do them mid block. I was mentioning to Kurt, I live in T three S on her permission, and in this block between Revo and the rail trail. There's already three duplexes existing there, mid block and T three S.
It makes sense.
I don't know, people don't really know they're there, I mean, they're not big, they're probably from the fifties or whatever, but they're already there, it seemed to be. Okay, I think.
I think it makes sense, you take out the two, three, that's supposed to be denser.
So that would then go from a conditional to an outright.
Well, no, condition, these would be the condit, oh, for T three.
Because currently it's, it's a, it's a condition.
Make this, yeah, the other conditions, just not B three. But we want, they would still have the common yard, A would apply, front edge type, B would apply. But three, it would be limited to T three S. Okay, so these other, yeah.
Well, we probably should end.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Holiday training. Well, we, I think we went pretty far, so not really too much in chapter two.
Such a big deal in the planning world is about introducing these different. I mean, it is, only this behind or maybe the same, eliminating or reducing parking requirements, I mean, it's. Everywhere.
What, what we provided here, what you all were working for. Sounds like. The last item was the holiday training session, debates, plan, and whether you wanna do a frame, you know, frame. Put together, you wanna do a core, you wanna do, you know, private get together, yeah. What dates would you go on? But we're four of you, Haversham's, only four of you now, so totally named their other three that makes the decision.
I mean, maybe everybody already knows how to generate building types and how they land and. Got some great examples of the row house, townhouse. Of course, using the Google Earth is a really. But also maybe having, I don't know, a little narration, personal narration from the development, which is helpful, I don't know.
Do you want to just get this to the planning permission meeting? That's one idea, that's.
Oh, is that a biggie though, I mean.
Well, we moved uh. A few items I can talk to you about later, but uh, you know, they have some. So it's now just gonna be two, but I'm not sure that'll take some time.
Well, what if I see if I can come up with a. Mission tour and then.
Hi Paul. Wait, I asked last time, um, I think I had asked a question of whether or not any of these issues would be especially regular meeting and the answer is no. You had an agenda for other business, is that still the case, or Paul just brought back up in the middle of a work session?
And we can talk about that, um, we have two items, next meeting, planning permission meeting. So you wanna add some other stuff to it, you can?
Are the items meeting, I'm just thinking that after. Designed, maybe it'll be hard to transition to.
Well, are those lengthy items on our record? What is it?
One's a sketch plan for a new apartment complex. And yes, there is a school.
In a sketch plan because it's, that's, that's part of the subdivision process. But that one, but, but the sketch plan is where we pre. So we just give them recommendations, now there's no vote, so we don't have to, you know, we'll give them some ideas and then let them run, we don't have to. We're not doing, we don't have to get into a level of detail anymore because it's like. That, we, we've changed the code, so it's just, it's just concept, so that shouldn't be forever, and then what's the other one?
We need to re-review what we brought.
Yeah, I remember, yeah, but yeah, we should.
Put it all together for you, and the other one is the middle school over there in Batesville, so it's gonna build a new middle school.
And that won't take us forever, and we're not gonna redesign it.
We've already seen the placement of it, have one. Oh, I am, oh, I'm sorry, that was a large regional.
They actually brought their uh, physical plans over earlier this morning, so those are.
I would think that if, if we move it. Relatively expeditiously, should, we have to stay a little bit longer and continue where we are, we'll never get through this stuff, don't you think, pick up.
Well, I think we just leave it to see what happens.
See what happens, but, but if, but if you're down at six with those two cases, you could go to seven with.
I don't have a problem with it, if we have all of our members there. Uh, and it's public meetings, so. Probably nobody else will be left in the audience.
We're likely to have more people, more of our members there at a regular meeting than a work session, so.
How many unit lots is that? But there's subdivision.
Yeah, so, and, and the reason is, is probably because it's what you're calling it a subdivision.
We changed the process, if you go to a different acreage, if you go to a certain acreage and you're developing, it's not a sketch plan. No longer this nonsense, it's all, you're building a street. You've got, you're building a development of a certain size, you just need to come.
So this, so that's really their land use plan, and if they already have their zoning, at some point in time, they're gonna. So my point is, they're, they're eventually gonna come back then with a preliminary plan and the design review.
Which is going to be a problem, because there's no, that's gonna be a problem.
I don't know, they're probably gonna take a while.
Well, and, and the idea of the sketch plan was that you don't have to have a full traffic and sort of report, so my, my only point being is. At some point down, it's likely to be a long meeting, cause we will have, I'll bet, because we'll have this, the, the traffic impacts study. And we'll have the design review sitting in that capacity, and we'll have the preliminary plan. Well, if you have a sketch plan, you're gonna have a preliminary plan, that's always. No, not for this meeting, but I think the ultimate approval.
Yeah, then might be a one.
Whatever, I'm just saying. Except for the specifics, whatever you're not telling us, that's the way that it go is, if, you know.
Are we gonna try?
This sounds like another Burchard thing, keep it some promise.
There's a regional lift station that's required for them to go to preliminary flat, that's not funded or built.
Oh, I, I, I get that.
Are we gonna try and have a holiday? Get together, because now we have two boards, we've got the design and the planning commissions. So you've got two boards to get together. Well, yeah.
That's the lives that be part of the tour, the field trip, right?
But this is, I think we're talking about two separate. So if you can come back with training session times and then uh, that would work, if, if this board would work, otherwise then we'll talk about.